Welcome to the work session of Wednesday, June 21st. Can I please have a motion to open the work session?
Motion to open the work session, second.
On favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. We have Alan Kessay of PKF O'Connor Davies. He's the partner at the audit firm. And he's going to go over the audit and the financial statements.
Good evening, everyone. I assume everybody has a copy of this just in order to walk you through it.
Okay.
I'm going to start on page, okay. On Roman numeral three, which is I, I, I. I just wanted to point out, this is a transmitter letter which is prepared by the town. Zoom, Rob and Jill put this together. It's similar to the management discussion and analysis. But because you issue what's known as an ACPR, an annual comprehensive financial report, you're required to submit this transmitter letter. Basically, it talks about certain things other than that the MDA does. It talks more about the village, the accomplishments during the year, the ongoing activities, and what's gonna happen in the future. I'm not gonna go through it. It runs through page Roman numeral sixteen. On Roman numeral seventeen is your certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is the 25th year the town has received this. 25th consecutive year, I should say, which is quite an accomplishment. First of all, because not every municipality, there's probably a handful that actually put this report together, a comprehensive financial report. And most of them do get their certificate. But there's a handful in Northchester County that actually prepare this report. Because it is fairly comprehensive, requires a lot of time. There are statistical schedules in the app, which I'm not gonna go over, which cover 10 years of activity. And every year, you have to update each one of those schedules. So there's a lot that I don't do. So for 25 years in a row, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you, Rob and Diana. Thank you.
Thank you.
How many years have you been in U.S.?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Come say. Come say.
So nineteen out of 25 years Diana's been here, okay?
Years ago, you used to get a nice wooden plaque.
Yes.
Now we get a little button.
Oh, you've got that?
They give you a wooden plaque.
No, it's a sticker.
They give you a wooden plaque, but they give you circles for each year instead of the plaque itself. You get a little round disc at June 21st.
So if you wonder why is it all of a sudden their plaque stops?
That's fine, guys.
It's got nothing to do with our performance.
No, absolutely not. So I'm, if you go ahead a few pages, it's not numbered. It's page one, actually, is the independent audit of this report. Basically, I've discussed this briefly. This discusses that we audited the financial statements of the town for the year end, December 31st, 2022. In the second paragraph is our opinion. And it says the financial statements referred to in the data present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the town as of year end. And that's known as an unmodified opinion, also a clean opinion, which is the best opinion you could receive. Okay? If you turn to page four, as I mentioned earlier, the management discussion and analysis. Again, this was prepared by your finance department, Rob, Jill, Diana and Joe who had input into it. This basically discusses the activity in the current year. What went up, what went down, the reasons for it and so forth. And that runs up to page sixteen, okay? Yeah, I think that's it. What I would like to do is turn to page sixty-four.
As much as you want.
Okay. I'm gonna skip around a little bit. On page sixty-four, it's the general fund comparative schedule of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance for both the budget and the actual. On the left-hand side, page sixty-four is the activity for 2022. The right-hand side is comparative information for 2021. The top portion of your revenues, and going left to right, you have the original budget, the final budget, the actual results, and then the variance with the final budget. This is a roll-up. So for example, the revenues, there's more detail on pages sixty-six to sixty-seven, where it breaks down all the different categories within each one of these subcategories. I'm gonna focus on this page. It's easier to go through. So the first line item, the real property taxes, you see that in the variance column. It's a positive 3,278,000. And I'm sure you all know that was from the sale of property. When you have property taxes, we do a calculation for a allowance for taxes receivable, which also includes deferred taxes receivable, okay? So because you sold that property, if you flip back one page, just to give you an idea of how it was affected, if you look under the taxes receivable towards the top of the page, you see in 2021, you had property acquired for taxes of 3,322,000. In 2022, you had 862,000, okay? So therefore, the calculation, generally, the allowance is 100% of the property acquired for taxes. But since it's minimal this year, we had to make an adjustment to your favor. So your property taxes came on these 15,710 versus the budget of 12,431, okay? And that's the reason for that. If you go down to the sale of property and compensation for loss, you'll see the positive variance of 2.5 million. That's from the sale of the property. You should also be aware about that. That sale of property is known as a one-shot.
Yep.
Meaning when you do your budget for, well, you did your budget for 23, it's not gonna reappear, okay? One-shots can be good, but they're not repetitive, so you can't budget for them. The next one down in importance is the state aid, the mortgage tax. There's a million three positive variance. Now, the mortgage tax only increased by 110,000. But because the budget, particularly the revenues, are budgeted very conservatively, you have this positive variance. Because as I said over and over again, wherever I go, you basically have no control over your revenues. And you didn't anticipate selling the property. You have no idea what the mortgage tax is gonna be, your sales tax and so forth. So it's always best to burn it conservatively, which you have done this year and in the past, and I'm sure going forward, continue to do so. Below that, you have your expenditures, and the details for that are on pages sixty-eight to seventy. And if you look in the variance column, you see that the variance is only 532,000. Because your budget was very tight. By budgeting your revenues conservatively, you're limited to your expenditures side because obviously you have to have a balanced budget. So the expenditures are the area within the budget that you can control, which you did because you had a positive variance of 500,000. And the increase in the total expenditures from year to year was only 901,000, which is less than 4%. So if you think of all the contracts and all the other mandatory raises that are incorporated into your expenditures, 4% is pretty good, okay? Then you have your other financing sources and uses, which is 204,000 for transfers out to the other funds. So your net change in fund balance, the third number up from the bottom in the actual column, is 8,554,000 versus a million, almost 2 million prior year. But if you look in your original budget column, the bracket at 815,000, at the end of 21, you took 600,000 out of the 21 unassigned fund balance to balance the 22 budget. And concluded in that 815,000, you encompassed purchase orders, which got rolled over automatically into the next year. So by doing that, by appropriating 600,000, if your budget came out exactly as you had budgeted, you would have utilized 600,000 of the fund balance. But in reality, you had a surplus of 8.5 million. Therefore, you have a total positive budgetary variance of 9,264,000. The third number up in the last column. So overall, the general fund is very low this year. Obviously, the largest contributing factor was the one-shot sale. Pardon?
I said that'll make any budgeting.
But as long as you realize it's one-shot.
We got it. We got it.
I think it's important. Okay, if you flip back one page to page sixty-three, there's the general fund comparative balance sheet. I wanna focus on the fund balance. So if you can turn to page fifty-six. It's a breakout of the fund balance in more detail. Okay, so on the, again, on the left side, we have the current year 2022, and you have all the funds going, the course, general fund, highway fund and so forth. The right half of the page is 2021. There are four categories that you have. There are five altogether. Oh, you have five, one, two, three, four, five. Yes, there are five categories. Gatsby, the government accounting standards board came out with a new pronouncement, Gatsby 54, about eight, 10 years ago, where they changed the terminology for all the fund balance classifications. And these are the names. So the first one is the amount spendable. And that's 1,646,000. That's made up of the prepaid expenditures with MEPCO, the employee retirement system, and the recent party retirement system. All prepaid expenditures based on the formulas and calculations. So that money is basically accounted for. Then you have the restricted, you have 99,000 in debt service. That's a legal requirement wherever you issue debt and you have a premium. The money has to be reserved for debt service to pay off the debt that you issued in the future, okay? And you can fairly consistent with that. The committed, the board adopted a committed fund balance of property acquisitions of 863,000. The purchase was 22, can you win?
It's junk call away. It's the property that we're negotiating.
Okay. Then you have your assigned, which are your purchase orders of 265,000. As I said, those are orders that have been submitted prior to the year-end for which you haven't received the goods and services as of December. So that money is assigned and it rises into your subsequent year's budget. Then you have 850,000, which you've appropriated out of this budget to balance the 2023 budget. And that's an increase of 250,000 from the prior year. And then you have your unassigned fund balance of 18,236, which is up a little over 7 million from the prior year. Now, that's a healthy fund balance, and it's 76% of your subsequent year's budget. But what that does, it gives you flexibility in your budgeting and your spending. Obviously, capital, the interest rates have gone up. So if you could utilize some of this instead of issuing debt, that'll be a savings. You won't have to any interest costs versus a higher.
That's the discussion for when you walk out the door. It's already prepared.
Still astounded on that.
So I mean, some people may say it's excessive. It really isn't. Because if you utilize it over the next couple of years and continue to replenish it each year by that budgeting where you have been, assuming the economy doesn't take a nosedive and things stay fairly stable, you'd be in good shape and you won't have to issue your debt and save the interest costs. So it's good to have it. If you could turn to page fifty-eight. I did wanna mention the issue of signature bank, which I'm sure you're aware of. And because of the quick actions by the finance department and the controls, you know, your offices, you were able to get all your money out of signature in time. You were not affected by it, and it was a good thing. Then I just wanna turn, if you, page seventy-one is the highway fund. Just go over some of these funds. Therefore, you have a positive fund balance there of 1,300,000, which is very good. And terms of the other funds, I just wanted to point out, if you turn back to page seventeen, I wanted to go to the general funds. Page seventeen, people are gonna look at this and, most people don't understand it. It's the full accrual statement. And if you look at the next, second number up from the bottom where it says unrestricted, you have a deficit of $48 million, okay? People look at this and they go, I don't understand. You have a general fund fund balance of $20 million, and here you have a deficit of $48 million. In your long-term liability schedule, which I'll show you in a minute, you have the other post-employment benefits, which is Gatsby 45, I think. 45 or 75?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. On my side, we elect the Gatsby 10. The other post-employment benefit requires, years ago, you only had to record what you actually spent for retirees' health benefits. But the new, the Gatsby pronouncement, which is several years old now, it forced you to have an actuary analyze all your employees who are currently working and determine what their OPED liability will be from this point in time until they retire. And then subsequently, until they might want to receiving health benefits. And that liability is $55 million, okay? But it has no bearing on your budgeting, on the general fund, on any of the funds. It's simply a full accrual number that you have to include, just like your bonds payable are on the schedule. They don't appear in any of the funds. The only thing that appears in the funds is what you actually pay each year for your debt, the principal and interest. And the same with OPED, what you actually pay for retirees' health benefits each year. That's it.
I guess, Alan, what I would say is, you know, to anyone looking at this, all municipalities are going to have this.
Every municipality.
Because this is the OPED, you know, performance.
But New York is unique in the sense that you can't fund this liability. If you were able to set up an irrevocable trust, meaning the money going into it can only be used for retirees' health benefits, New York State does not allow you to fund it. And even you, even if you could fund it, $55 million is, you know, unimaginable.
What is the figure for New York City?
Billions.
That's astronomical.
Now, New York City, for some reason, they are funded. But certainly not to the folks then. How they got away with it, don't know. I guess they're in a, you know, category by themselves, so to speak. But New York State is not allowed to fund this liability.
I do know that Rob has had a number of inquiries over the course of the years from residents looking at this.
Yes.
Flipping out saying.
You had to help me the one year.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I get calls from, you know, people in some of the school districts. They have a new board member, they look at the financials things, and they say, we're in a deficit. How could we operate? We can go bankrupt. And it's because they're looking at this. Alan's had a client where one of the big four firms was doing a component unit, a hospital, and they weren't going to issue their report until I put in a going concern on the municipality I was from because of the OPED. I mean, they just, not everybody understands it. So that's why I pointed it out to you. If you do get any inquiries, which Rob has in the past.
Directly to Alan.
I mean, I know I always say it's a municipality because these are obligations that are due way into the future.
Absolutely.
And over time. So the reason for the reporting in this way, I think, wasn't maybe political.
Well, Gatsby, the government accounting standards board, which is located in, I think it's Norwalk, Connecticut, if anybody wants to know. They come up with these pronouncements, and their thinking, when they first came out with this full accrual statement, probably almost 20 years ago, the idea was to put all municipalities that issued debt on a level of paying view with other entities that issued debt that are, that are already on a full accrual basis, that compare apples to apples. The bottom line is, I don't know of one municipality that has had a rating call with either Moody's, Vandenpors, where they ever inquired about these two pages.
No.
Never.
No, they understand.
They understand. So I mean.
That's what matters.
I don't know, I don't understand why they do it, but they do it. And they continue to do it because if you turn to page forty-two, there was a new pronouncement this year, Gatsby saving number eighty-seven, which has to do with leases. Again, this has no bearing on the general fund, the revenue of the other funds. It required the municipalities to review all their leases and determine what the long-term liability would be. So there was a company, there are two companies out there that were utilized, where they read all the contracts and determine what the liability is and do the calculations. Because not every contract has a interest rate incorporated into it. So you would have to come up with an implicit rate. And if, in your case, it was not material, so we didn't implement it. There was no reason to. It was okay. And next year, you have Gatsby number ninety-six, which has to do with software licenses. I don't know if that's gonna, you don't wanna be affected by that?
Probably. I mean, we have a lot of different sponsors. I don't know what the threshold is. I mean, with the leases this year, the only items we leased are a postage machine and, well, maybe the police data report or something, just very short-term leases.
And there's a calculation.
No equipment or anything like that.
Right. And there's a calculation that we do in terms, it's called materiality. It's a formula, and based upon that, if the amount is less than the tolerable statement, it doesn't have to be recorded, okay? And the same thing applies to Gatsby number ninety-six. So what you should do is go through all your agreements. And anything that's less than a year, or if it doesn't have an extension, they're not the, is basically not included.
Okay. Most of it is year-to-year.
Oh, if it's year-to-year, then you're probably okay. So you all require a dising alert. Because we could, I mean, we could do the calculation, but we have to read the contracts and other terms. And it's, I mean, the amount that you.
It's more judgmental.
The time it would take us to do it could be done a lot quicker by these two companies that actually, this is all they do. I mean, they basically were created because of these Gatsby pronouncements, so.
They have family members.
Pardon?
They have family members working there, maybe.
I don't know too much about them. I know some of our clients have used them. They're very good. They have a quick turnaround time. They seem to be accurate. We do review their calculations, but it's really a complicated process. You wouldn't want us to. That's it for the financial statements. I do also have the management letter, which is something we've received. I will say that there aren't any questions on the finances.
Job well done.
Pardon?
Yes, job well done.
All right. I mean, let's put it this way, Rob and Diana, you would make that much easier. If you turn to page twelve.
This is true.
There are controlled efficiencies. Potentially, you could have significant efficiencies, material weaknesses or controlled efficiencies. And these comments are the lesser three. Some of them are from the prior year. There's not, I'm not even, you know, you could read these, it's really nothing major in here.
So no material deficiencies?
It's nothing material, no. I mean, for example, the first one, the special districts, your fund balance in some of the special districts is substantial. I mean, we're just, a lot of these comments are just to inform the board, if you don't already know that they exist. Basically, it's to cover ourselves. Because we've had situations where we used to report something year after year after year. The board never took action on it. One year, it wasn't my client. One year was taken out of the management letter. It was a theft, and because of that, we were laying there, okay? But, so we just put these things in here. It's all informational for the board. So the special purpose fund has some trusts that are inactive. And that comment is repetitive every year.
And those are, those are funds that are basically donations to the town. For example, the largest one is the Glacier Arboretum. There's about $150,000 that's been sitting there. Well, we've slowly whittled it down. But because they're very restrictive, most of these, they can only be used for a very certain purpose. So for example, that one, you know, we've done some trail work, I think. I, did you repair a bridge or built a bridge?
Right, built a bridge.
Last year. But the funds are sitting there, and they can't really go anywhere else. So eventually, who will spend them? But they're, they're special purpose funds.
So, and it's, it is the purview of the conservation board to identify projects and then expend these funds to do the projects. So they're in a unique position that they have a six-figure budget to do with everything on this park. And yet we can't get them to identify projects and do them. So we get written up as a new project. Yeah, so really, I wish you would. That would be great. Please, go walk through the park, tell me what you think. We'll build it.
On page thirteen, there's some road opening permits, which are several years old. And they discuss this with Rob. And basically, the only thing you could do is try and, make a good faith effort to contact who these deposits belong to and try and return it to them.
And these are, oftentimes, are people that leave, move out of town. When they do construction work on their property or, or opening a road, they leave a deposit with us. And if they don't request it back, I think they have what a one-year period.
Right.
And then we're supposed to go out and re-inspect it. If they don't ask for the re-inspection, it sits there. And then a lot of times, they leave, or it's a contractor that leaves it, and he leaves the area, and it's sitting there. So we're working with Ed, who's gonna give us an opinion on where people leave, what we should do if we determine we can't give it back to somebody. Because we can't reach them.
What I think.
The answer, as I said, the answer, in some cases, unclaimed funds have to be returned to the state. The state maintains an unclaimed fund, but this is not one of those cases.
Excellent.
So there's some due diligence that we should make sure we followed.
Yep.
If we have, then monies can.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're gonna, we have identified the procedure that we're gonna look through to kind of see if we can get that money returned to people. And if not, if we get that letter returned to us undeliverable, then at that point, I guess we can, you know, if we made a good faith effort to reach them, then that's revenue for the town.
Right.
Approximately, how many permits does that equate to?
A lot.
Yeah.
There are some large ones in there, but for, for the most part, they're what, 500 or 1,000 dollars?
Started at 500, and then. Oh, the fee went up to 750 dollars, and now it's 800 dollars, so.
Okay, so that's a, that's a long list, okay?
What are the open capital projects, long-term open capital projects?
Okay, years and years ago, you had a controller who really didn't maintain records properly. I'm talking, how long have you been here?
I've been here 16 years.
Okay, so go back 20 years. And basically, what it is, for each capital project you have, each individual capital project, it's a schedule that shows the authorization, how much was authorized for the project, the expenditures, and the financing, the revenues. Some are funded, are funded by issuance of debt, some are state-funded and so forth. And basically, it just shows you the authorization, the expenses, the revenues and the fund balance. Because it gives you, and it helps you track all your capital projects. Because when they're completed, at that point in time, they could be capitalized and added to your fixed assets. It's also good to see where your bond money is going, okay? We've never had any issue with the bonds and the payments. We look at all the documents, everything is fine in terms of that. It's, it's not a required statement, it's a recommended statement. And it's just something we're pointing out. I know that they, they're close.
Well, Diana maintains one from, I think, the point where you and I began working together. So the problem exists because we changed accounting systems and records were thrown away. So we have some old, old, old projects that we just can't.
It's zero.
It's gone out.
But, you know, for the last, I don't know. However, on Diana and I, we're working together. Diana, that's one of the schedules that she maintains. And, you know, one of the other schedules she maintains, and you talked about the assets. Maybe you would mention to the board, because you mentioned it to me. You know, the quality of the fixed asset reporting, and that's all Diana.
Yeah, I mean, you don't know how many times we do it. And capital assets is probably not, don't get me wrong, one of the easiest accounting concepts there is. It seriously is. I mean, you use straight-line depreciation versus all these other different kinds. So you have an asset, you acquire it, it's good for 10 years. So every year, you take one-tenth depreciation. After 10 years, it's fully depreciated, and you could write it off. However, whenever we go into any municipality, do the audits, that's probably the last schedule we get. Because they just don't maintain them like Diana does. And that's probably one of the first schedules we get.
Yeah, so we're basically the gold standard, guys? Is that what I mean? So we're basically the gold standard guys, is that what I'm hearing? Twenty-five years of excellence?
I mean, this is the truth, you can ask any of the managers, the partners. For some reason, they're, I, I don't understand why, it's really an easy concept. You didn't remember Japal? You always had issues with the capital assets there, it's just something that you have to maintain on a regular basis. And if you do it, there's no problem, but if you don't, obviously, it could be an issue. So fortunately here, there's no issue.
Great.
Okay?
And that's all her. I don't touch it.
Um, the justice corps, we just threw this in, I think there was a fairly valid explanation, there was one filing that was late up to the state. Has we done by the tenth of the month, and it was late.
Somebody had surgery, unfortunately. So this was up for quite a few weeks.
Living in my house.
And so we were a little bit late on that one, reporting, but, uh, that's all.
Do, I mean, do we have, um, like a backup for situations like that?
Yeah, we do, that was, that was difficult, because I think something, Kathy was out for some reason at the exact same time, and we had a part-timer. That was filling in, but was not aware of how to file that report or do anything, so.
Okay.
Um, again, this is informational to you, we don't have even get a slap on the wrist, we don't get, nobody calls to say, hey, where's this report? You know, they got it, and it's just something that the auditor's not mature, but not the end of the world.
Just information, so, that's basically it. You let it run very well, your financial report is on time, this has to be filed by June, the due date?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I see, I forwarded it to you the other day.
Oh.
Yeah.
I was in a while asking for that.
Yes, you were, that's right, yes. Yes, it's fine.
Nice.
Yeah, very, very nice. Um, so the order went very well, it's, you know, in good shape, and. How are your upcoming discussion, maybe I could determine what you're gonna do with your fund balance?
We got a lot of things to do with it, unfortunately.
Well, no, fortunately, because places that don't have, uh, the situation that, and they have to borrow and incur the interest rates and so forth. I'd say the very question will be happening soon.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you, this is very impressive.
Thank you.
Well done.
Bye, Alan. Thank you.
Bye, Alan.
Goodnight.
Bye.
You can leave the fifty dollars for parking. Alright, so that leads into, uh, that was the good news, actually, there's no real bad news, but, um. I kind of just wanted to go over historically, when we talked about the fund balance and, and where it is, and kind of take a look at where it's been, where it is today, and maybe where it will go once we consider funding some of these projects that we have.
Do we have what you're looking at, or no?
You do, it's in the packet, uh, it should be some of the first couple pages of the packet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, the, the first chart that I show here is the fund balance from, uh, actually, it says two thousand eleven, but I actually expanded to two thousand eight.
Yep.
Because I wanted just to just show, um, kind of, and, and the magenta bars are the general fund. Uh, not that the other funds aren't important, but the general fund is the main operating fund of the town, most everything goes through that. So if you go back to two thousand eight, and we were about three point one million. And then if you look where we got to in eleven and twelve, and we were just over a million. We were six, seven, eight percent of, uh, of our, uh, next year's budget, and that's an extremely low number. Kind of the, the warning line is about fifteen percent, um, they'd like you to have twenty to twenty-five percent at a minimum. So it was difficult in that time, we actually borrowed money, and, and I actually had a lengthy report that I had to give to Moody's and explain to them how I would rebuild the fund balance, because typically, you wouldn't have six percent fund balance and maintain a triple A rating. But, um, we had a lot of other factors in the town, um, uh, stable management, um, high rate of tax collections, et cetera. So, um, you know, we maintained it through that, and.
Was that, was, was that because of the recession?
So that was really, um, I'd say almost policy decisions at that time. Um, maybe not an understanding or, um, or a policy to maintain a healthy fund balance. And they were using, they were appropriating large amounts of fund balance at that time in the operating budget. Um, so, um, about, let's see, two thousand, what, eleven is when I took over and, and, you know, that was, I won't say alarming. But it, it was a little bit low, so, um, you know, we kind of changed the philosophy of how we budgeted at that point. And as Alan mentioned, I've always been a conservative on the revenue side, because you just can't predict. And, you know, he mentioned mortgage tax this last year, over two million dollars, awesome, we never would have seen that coming. The housing market shot up as interest rates exploded, we're seeing that come way down. And I got my first mortgage tax payment this year, and I think it was four hundred and sixty thousand. I get two a year, if you double that, it's nine hundred and twenty, and the budget's nine fifty. So we're gonna have a struggle to make that number this year. Uh, my first quarter's sales tax was just over a million, and my budget's four point one. So we're certainly not trending as we have the last two years.
You get sales tax twice a year as well?
Four times a year, yeah, yeah.
Have we seen a bump up in that?
Well, we had seen the bump from two thousand nineteen, when the county added the additional one percent. So we've already seen that in accounting for that in the budget. And we had raised it over the last couple of years, and now we're about four point one, and that's probably about the right number. It looks that way right now. You know, hopefully, the economy remains at least stable where we are, and it looks like inflation's trending back down. So that would be, that would be good. But then if you just look over the years of what we've done with the fund balance, the last time we borrowed was two thousand eighteen. And if you look, there's a little bit of dip in nineteen and twenty, twenty was the, uh, was the pandemic. And that was the, um, really the only year since, what, two thousand twelve, I think, that we've had a deficit for the year. In the general fund, unassigned fund balance. So then you look all the way up here, eighteen million, where we are at the end of twenty-two. And then, uh, I bring that number back down a little bit, and we'll discuss that in a moment. If we were to use fund balance to fund some of these projects. So I'll say we typically borrow every quarter or five years, has been the trend in the town. One of the reasons that we do that is we have a great cash flow at the town. So because of fund balance and general fund and some of the other funds, um, as well as the high property tax collections. We don't have to do short-term borrowing, it doesn't make any sense for us to go through all that effort. And, uh, so our kind of short-term borrowings from ourselves, we, we would offset it with the general fund. We like to know when a project's done, and that way we know exactly how much to borrow. You'll see, we had the downtown project, and we couldn't know, that was just a behemoth, and it took forever, and we thought we had a handle on how much we were gonna borrow, but we didn't. So the problem gets into, if you borrow based on an estimate at the beginning, you're probably gonna borrow again, or at least find an alternate funding source. If you fund it afterwards, you know exactly how much you're funding, take that money, you close the capital project and move on. So, um, we typically borrow every three, four, or five years. And we kind of, and you'll see the resolutions that come to the board, Diana prepares those. Usually the funding source could be, to be decided, or it could be a future bond, a lot of times. So in twenty eighteen, we last borrowed, we used some, I had laid out a schedule of allocating fund balance to offset some of the debt associated with that. Now it looks like we have money to be able to fund some of these projects that we either have completed already or are in the process of working on. So, uh, that's just the first, first chart I wanted to show you. The second one is just, uh, showing our fund balance as a percentage of the next year's budget. And I just kind of, these are the four major funds, and I have that kind of solid red line at the bottom, which is twenty percent where we, you know, are saying we don't ever want to go below that. If you do in some of the smaller funds, that's okay, I think that's the highway fund, it gets, goes a little bit low sometimes, but that's okay. There's not a lot of sources of revenue in the highway fund, and that's usually dependent on how, uh, how bad the winter is. So sometimes if, uh, if we have more solid purchase, more overtime for the employees piling snow, that number dips a little bit. So, uh, just looking at again, that magenta line, um, it's staying at a really healthy level. The water fund has been pretty healthy. Refuge looks a little bit better on the screen than it does on this chart, but that's the one that kind of peaked at like ninety-six percent, and it's now dropping to twenty-six percent. We have been using allocations of fund balance there to offset that huge contractor renewal that we got, uh, two years ago. So, uh, that's one of the reasons we've been able to stay under the, the tax cap, is we've been able to use that fund balance from refuse to smooth that, uh, tax increase out.
When is that contract up?
It's only three years, right, was, was it a two-year, or a, I think it was three years with two one-year extensions.
Extensions, yes.
Um, because we had seven years, and we found out we were unable to have a contract kind of length. So I think this was three with two one-year extensions, and that was what was permitted.
Keep our fingers crossed, next time the block can be held, I'm sure.
Um, so the next chart I have is just a list of, and it's, it's not exhaustive, but it's the, um, major projects that are kind of on our, our radar right now. I don't know if it's easier to see or not, but the, the darker and italicized, uh, projects are ones that are either completed or they're ongoing. And the kind of lighter, uh, print are projects that we believe should be completed soon, but, uh, but we're not there yet. So, you know, I'll talk first about the downtown Hamlet project, you see there's a big number to be funded. We originally borrowed thirteen point eight million dollars for the project. At the outset of the project, it was a fourteen point eight million dollar project. Borrowed thirteen point eight million, optimistically thinking that we would use a million dollars worth of fund balance to kind of to create a debt service. And we didn't fund the project with that million dollars for fund balance, because we thought, maybe we won't need it. And that was not the case.
When, when we were younger, ninety-three.
Among the forty-something change orders to that project was about a million dollars' worth of contaminated soil that had to be removed. Among some ADA, uh, field changes, et cetera. So, uh, so there's a big amount there that, that's remaining to be funded, were we not to use fund balance, uh, we'd have to borrow for that. The Millwood sidewalk, that's kind of been stuck in, uh, New York State DOT, real estate, I don't know, purgatory, I guess. So we actually reallocated monies that we borrowed back in two thousand nine, and a multimodal grant that we had secured for one seventeen.
Through Susie Alkin.
And, and when that project became, uh, when, when we realized that wasn't feasible, because some of the changes in the DOT standards. We shifted that money, we did some work on the King Street sidewalk, and then the remainder of that's gonna be shifted to Millwood. But as that project, uh, has been lingering for years, the costs are going up, and we anticipate needing another possibly. This is just a real estimate of half a million dollars to finish that project. Couple of years ago, we put the community center roof on. DPW fuel, fuel tanks was another project that came in over budget. Millwood Park, if you remember the lights we put there, that was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar SAM grant from Murphy at the time, wasn't it? It was before Murph, before Hark, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was Murphy, yeah.
Thanks. We've got plenty of money from Hark and Empority, but I think that particular one's. Uh, but that's the difference, so we knew there was gonna be a difference, we always knew that project was bigger than just the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that's the difference. If you spent any time in town hall, you know the HVAC system, does, you're either freezing or you're roasting, and there's nowhere in between. That's because it's about a thirty-year-old system, and we're keeping it together with spit and glue, so sooner or later, that will need to be replaced. Um, I think it was about four or five years ago, the, the town used to contract out lawn mowing. And it was getting more and more expensive each year, and then we realized if we just bought a hundred and sixty thousand dollars' worth of equipment. Our guys could do the mowing, and we wouldn't need to spend a hundred plus thousand dollars a year to do that, so. So that equipment was, was purchased with the ultimate goal of, of funding it through the next borrowing. Both town hall and DPW need to have firearms, I think, where are we with that? Did we issue that RFP, I know we've gotten some quotes, I know we're.
I think we got quotes, I don't know.
Is that Arco, is that Arco, or does that just?
Walter's been meeting with, I think there were three or four different vendors that actually came out or giving him quotes, but I think we're moving on that.
Yes.
As we speak. The, the chapack roof and, and ultimately, we got a grant for that one, was that one, that was Chris Burdick?
That was Chris Burdick.
For that one, uh, so it won't be that whole four seventy-two, but, uh, but we do need to, uh.
Yes, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from Burdick.
Yep.
Right.
And then the recently completed, uh, long awaited Genny Park retaining wall. That turned out to be a pretty large project.
It's huge.
We ordered, uh, I think those are about three Mack trucks, those highway department vehicles, if I recall, Diana. And those were purchased already a couple of years back. The horizontal grinder, that's one thing we go back and forth, that's, uh, possibly use out of the refuse fund, we may or may not.
Only six hundred and fifty.
Remember he.
He was gonna just move.
That for the mulch?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, to create mulch.
Yeah.
So it, it's not just that we want to create mulch, what ends up happening is is that when, when our crews go out in like clear damn trees. There's a storm somewhere, so you just can't like keep them around, so you have to do something with it.
Right. Right.
So it's only by taking and turning them into mulch and then selling it that we can sort of clear a spot.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, to be able to get rid of those oxidants, that they're tremendously expensive, we would have to do contracting for it, and.
No, just to remove a tree on your property is, is orbiting, it's insane.
Yeah. Yeah, Mike's to Cali went through that exercise maybe a year and a half ago, so that, that probably predates Holly and, um, and Ally. And ultimately, we came to the decision, it just didn't make any sense to do that. So we've been nursing that horizontal grinder, it's probably about, about fifteen years old or so. And we've been nursing it each year, um, spending a lot of money to repair it, but it keeps going.
To keep it going, yeah.
Every year, I feel like we put Band-Aids on it.
We do, we do.
And they're presentable, it's, it's like, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, it's not a, it's not a five hundred dollar fix, yeah.
Under your evidence, I don't know.
Is this either, here, the, this listing here, this is to replace the one?
It would be, yeah.
Okay.
To get any one, yeah.
Anyway, again, this is a list, not, not necessarily, um, you know, this would all come before the board, something like that before.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's on our radar.
That decision, yeah, yeah, that, that was.
Yeah.
And is that what, I mean, is that about the approximate cost?
Yes.
Yes.
And what's the lead time or something like that?
Oh, probably, I don't know, three to six months, I would imagine, at least, we're, we're seeing extremely long, yeah.
That would be.
I was wondering with the cars.
That might be conservative now, yeah.
I would think it might be a year.
It could be, it could be, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I mean, it's kind of out there, but it may not really be out there.
Be out there, no, no, good point.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then just the, the bottom grouping are some really expensive water projects that, um, these probably wouldn't be funded through that fund balance, that was the general fund, and these are water projects. It was one of the reasons we needed to raise water rates this past January one, um, in anticipation of this coming up. So we've got the Quaker Road Water Main, we had originally estimated that at four point five, I don't even know what that is right now. I've, I've seen some horrendous estimates, and I don't even wanna speak them.
Don't.
But this project is, is at least twenty twenty-five now.
Yeah.
Um, and we're not even certain the county has the funding to go forward with it, so that's kind of on hold, but it's definitely on our radar.
Hopefully.
Uh, and the next thing about it, particularly in twenty twenty-five, simply there'll be a little bit of time and distance for our residents, a little more time. Yeah, um, some of the culvert project to this. Right, the worst would have been if they all kind of hit one ass or another, yeah.
Happy residents.
Yes, eventually they will then, when they turn on the spigot and something comes after, it's a very horrible water.
Eventually.
Um, the Millwood Water Treatment Plant Roof, that I think, did we go out to bid for that, you know, we.
We did, yes.
Yeah, um, so that's a, that's a big one. Uh, the cement relining, I think we have just done that study to kind of determine areas, um, that might be, uh, that that process might help us as opposed to replacing the mains.
We got, yeah, we, yeah.
That's just kind of a placeholder there, I don't. That's just kind of a placeholder there. I don't think we've identified any particular mains at a moment that I know of.
Not for cement lining, we've got some replacement ones.
Yeah. No, it's it's been fifteen years or so.
Yeah.
Cause I know when I first started working here, we did that. The generator, we all know about the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. The vector that I think we just resubmitted the grant request, right?
Okay, yeah, so fingers crossed on that.
Yeah, we're hoping. They kind of told us what was wrong in the application last time around, and I believe we corrected it. Hopefully we qualify this time around. That was just the machine that we have right now, and I think we've talked about it before, Sabrina did in the MS four discussion. It's just the machine that we have is inadequate to do uh what's required for the new MS four regulations. The generator tank, those uh capital projects underway right now at the water treatment plant. And then we get to the water main going under the sawmill. We've seen estimates go all over the place on that project, but I think we're back down. I think Bob said it was under two, I put two as a placeholder, but well, me, here it is.
I'm sorry, I'm laughing.
Here it is, Jerry Marshall said eight, then he said three, then Bob told me eight. And I'm like, we we're not talking about dollars, you're talking about millions of dollars, like I three is different than eight. Do I need to get eight? Cause that's a problem. Three I can probably get, so um yeah, we're gonna.
Personally, I think two seems low. Yeah.
We thought so, but that's what the engineering, uh that's what the estimate the engineers came up with. That was so, that wasn't the back of the envelope. That's supposed to be a good number, so.
So with all the things. So we 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 literally have to replace a water main that runs under Metro North tracks. So the reality is, it's the same vintage as everything that we replaced in the downtown, so. Yeah, it's reasonable to assume that it's probably in greatest shape. It's already broken once, thankfully it broke off the tracks when we are parking lot, but um we have have tried to um have conversations with Metro North, explain to them the uh urgency in the project. We've spoken to them about uh how important it is that they work with us in trying to, you know, get permits that we need, and we're starting that conversation once again. We need to do borings across the tracks to see what the soil composition is, because that's what made the project so expensive. The first time, it was a difference in soils and because of that, they had to do a different type of tunneling operation that
Yeah.
exploded the cost of the project. And so we're hoping that since we've shifted the project down uh south in the parking lot, um south of the actual train station building and and staircases, that hopefully we have a little bit of elbow room to work there. But what it means is that we need a permit not only from Metro North, but but also now DOT, because we're in the right loop here.
Okay.
So um we were excited that we got Metro North's attention and that we were going to be able to get that cooperation for this permit, only to find out that we need that DOT as well. And yeah.
They seem like a question.
Yeah, they're just a great group.
They're all so easy to deal with, really wonderful.
So we're very excited.
Speaking of DOT, when are we turn, when are they turning on the lights at the Sawmill and Lauren Brook Road?
That's a great question.
My understanding is everything's done, we're just waiting on them to.
They were waiting on. They were waiting on the uh new uh one of the poles, I think. They were waiting on a a part of the the traffic signalization. And until that was in place, they weren't going to open the lane and activate the light.
And everything looks like it's hanging and it's gotta be on some sort of fold.
Yeah, I've noticed that too. They are waiting for something, and maybe I'm not describing it correctly, but there was something that it was a lead time. Sounds familiar?
Yeah.
Yeah, ask it though.
Okay.
I hope when they do it, that they do a clean job. Last time they took that fabric material off the lights, they left a lot of it hanging.
Oh, yeah.
And looking absolutely awful. I mean, it sounds like a small matter, but it's just something that people have to look at every time they go by, so I don't know how to address something like that.
We'll get an update from the board on that.
Hey, just the last project I have listed here is the Bedford Road um pump station. Working on for a bit now. I think we were turned down for that last grant, Jill, correct? For Bedford Road pump station, so.
Yes.
That's on Up, on Bedford Road in Upland, in that area?
No, it's uh the one that's uh on the school ground.
Right, it's across from Upland Road.
Yes, yeah, yeah, the back of the school.
Oh, yeah, like the full barn, it's beautiful barn, but.
Right, the twelve blocks, exactly correct, yes.
Yeah, I remember.
In in front of Upland.
I remember a discussion on the other side when something went wrong, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and the last kind of chart that I have is if we were to fund some of these projects with the fund balance that we have, uh you know, what would that do to our fund balance? And then all the way to the right, the projected debt service each year, what would that save us each year in the operating budgets? Just so the board has, and I won't go through each of the projects, we just talked about them, but that would just be the effect. So what will end up happening is, and this is uh it's good that Diana's here because this is what she does, among other things, but she's the master of all the capital projects and as we start to close some of these out, now that we've identified that these would be we could fund these through fund balance. You know, Diana and I will work to close these projects out, we would have a memo to the board requesting to use fund balance to close these out, and as Alan mentioned. I've looked at uh bond rates from the last few bond sales and seem not terrible. It's it's not what you're seeing in the market with mortgage rates or anything like that, municipal bonds, especially for a triple A. They're anywhere between probably three and four percent, depending on the length. I mean, if it was a shorter project, a five-year payback, it would probably be about three percent. The thirty-year will probably be closer to four. But still, that's a lot of money, four percent on, you know, if you look at this entire list here of twenty-one point seven million dollars worth of bonds. That's a big hole in the operating budget going forward. So to be able to fund this, to have the flexibility to fund this with fund balance would would be great, so.
Would we get any premium for that, even though the rates are up due?
Yeah, it's difficult to know, we may not, we may not, um.
Okay.
So Rob, would you make a recommendation to the board and and be looking, you know, at in a subsequent work session to me, if you come in?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, so I think I just wanted to get this on the radar. This isn't for anybody to make a decision today, but just so that they have an understanding. I wanted to put in context the fund balance, because it's fantastic, but the vast majority of that surplus for twenty-two came from Haight's Cross Road, about five point three million dollars came from Haight's Cross. And then we got another million from uh mortgage tax and another seven hundred thousand or so from sales tax. So those are, numbers are not to be repeated, so while everything looks great now and you know, yeah, I will recommend what I would would think we could use for fund balance while, you know, keeping a balance for future rainy days. And and I also anticipate a little bit of difficulty moving forward for revenue in the next couple of years. I I don't know that mortgage tax, sales tax and bounce back. You know, we did finally settle both contracts. Those, both contracts have an increase in excess of the tax gap, the two percent. Healthcare last year, as good as we've been with MEPCO and far below market rates, we still increased three and a half percent MEPCO, that's above the two percent. Retirement system is going to be, that's based on the return on investment up in Albany that they're getting in the retirement system. With the market the way it's been, you know, I think the market's about twenty percent down over prior years. We can see an increase in retirement system rates too, so you know, it's good to have that fund balance. We typically, we wouldn't want to allocate fund balance in the operating budget for an ongoing cost. We wouldn't want to say, okay, we're going to fund this employee and we plan to play, pay for that employee every year for fun, through fund balance. We wouldn't want to do that. But in an instance where we're trying to stay below the tax cap, which we've been able to do for all eleven or twelve years of the tax cap, and we would anticipate being able to do that again with fund balance, so.
Rob.
It's all good problems to have.
You said that um you know, like twenty percent, twenty twenty-five percent is kind of like the floor, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
What's, what percent would you consider most comfortable?
Um I'd probably say between thirty and forty percent.
Okay.
And what would we be after this? If we.
You know, if we funded all those projects.
Yeah.
From like fifty-two.
We're still fifty-something.
Fifty-eight at that point, but but we don't know the results of twenty twenty-three yet, which
Yeah.
made even to some of that balance. We had eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated in the twenty twenty-three budget, so. You know, as Alan mentioned, when he was going through the financials, had we been right on our number, it would have reduced fund balance by six hundred thousand. So if we're right on our number, it reduces the fund balance by eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
So um you know, we're we're hoping things are better than that. You know, in the conservative revenue models that we follow, we've been able to do that each year, even when we allocate fund balance, we've been better. If if we've allocated five hundred thousand, we only needed three hundred thousand, et cetera. So hopefully we'll we'll continue, but this is more difficult here, for sure.
Yeah, I'm worried that but for Chapak Crossing, our building permit's going to be way down too.
They they will, right, so.
House sales are much slower and.
Yeah, all of that. Building permits has been a steady source of revenue for the last probably five years at least. It's been very good. And we, I expect that to continue this year, but maybe not next year. I think they're already starting to occupy some of those houses, job openings, SEOs, and there's no building permit money coming in from any of those houses, so. You know, we were comfortable with the number that we had in twenty-three, but that may have to be lower than twenty-four. You know, we'll have a discussion at budget time with uh with Bob and Sabrina to see what they think is out there on the horizon.
Good.
Good information.
Thank you. Is there anything else coming up with a long-term capital project that we want need to start thinking about?
What about solo? If I there was some discussion about like when the roof is done at Chapak, it's where is?
Yeah, we'd have to go out and just investigate on a separate bid.
Yeah, I I think these are everything that is on the horizon. This building in particular is not in great shape. We're kind of doing it piecemeal. If we talked about the HVAC, um we're going bathroom by bathroom right now. I think, did we get a quote for wallpaper or paint? I know um.
Yeah, I mean, look, honestly, it might be cheaper to knock the whole thing down.
Uh.
If we could put in a nice community center, I would love it on the mix up.
Well, I think this building should be part of the, you know, our P D and that's going.
If you were uh, if you're ever in Christina's office or the justice court counter, you might get wet while you were uh.
Yes.
We're interviewing for.
Oh, it's now in the assembly room, have you seen now it's?
Something, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh so that that would be maybe um, you know, some other expenditures that weren't identified here, but are probably on the radar, but it that that's always been a discussion and really um, you know, for years, what if we were ever going to do anything with this building, why put, and that's some serious money into the building, but you know, we've talked about that for years, and we're still here, and the building is kind of in not great shape, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds like it's something.
We'll move over to Amsterdam, it's a lovely city.
Exactly. We'll come to meetings. All right. All right, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I want to thank Diana again, because I'm glad she sat in.
Thank you, Diana.
But you know, our our results are, you know, Alan mentioned twenty-five years, Diana's been with the town longer than me. And a great many of the policies and procedures she put into place as I was coming in and uh so we we run the way that we do. We've got a great team altogether, we really do. But I can't do it without Diane, so.
Thank you. All right, I propose, because I think the next discussion is late, that we take a five-minute bathroom break?
Yeah, I thought you were going to say, let's knock off knockboxing facade grants and then take a five-minute break.
We can do facade, we can do those really quick.
Yeah, not talk about ready.
I just know we have Don and and you know, they're on, so.
It's okay, can I take your break?
All right, let's let's take a five-minute break. I don't know, Lauren, if you have to do anything, do anything on the.
Maybe mute us?
Yeah, definitely mute us.
Yeah, I think Christina, if you can mute, then it'd be good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to thank Diana again because I'm glad she sat in.
Thank you, Diana.
I'm glad she sat in, but you know, our our results are, you know, Alan mentioned twenty five years, Diana's been with the town longer than me. And uh a great menu of the policies and procedures she put into place as I was coming in and uh so we we run the way that we do. We've got a great team all together. We really do. Um but I can't do it without Diane, so.
Thank you. All right, I propose because I think the next discussion is we late that we take a five minute bathroom break.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna say let's knock off knock box and facade grant and then take a five minute break.
We can do facade. We can do those really quick.
Yeah, we knocked off.
Yeah.
I just know we have Don and then that and you know.
It's okay, can I take your break?
Um all right, let's let's take a five minute break. I don't know Lauren, if you have to do anything, do anything on the.
Maybe mute us?
Yeah, definitely mute us.
Yeah, I think Christina, if you can mute, then.
Sure.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I propose because I think the next discussion is we late that we take a five minute bathroom break. Yeah. I just know we have Don and then that and you know.
It's okay, can I take your break?
Um all right, let's let's take a five minute break. I don't know Lauren, if you have to do anything, do anything on the.
Maybe mute us?
Yeah, definitely mute us.
Yeah, I think Christina, if you can mute, then.
Sure.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to thank Diana again because I'm glad she sat in. But you know, our our results are, you know, Alan mentioned twenty five years, Diana's been with the town longer than me. And uh a great menu of the policies and procedures she put into place as I was coming in and uh so we we run the way that we do. We've got a great team all together. We really do. Um but I can't do it without Diane, so.
Thank you. All right, I propose because I think the next discussion is we late that we take a five minute bathroom break. Yeah.
I thought you were gonna say let's knock off knock box and facade grant and then take a five minute break.
We can do facade. We can do those really quick.
Yeah, we knocked off.
Yeah.
I just know we have Don and then that and you know.
It's okay, can I take your break?
Um all right, let's let's take a five minute break. I don't know Lauren, if you have to do anything, do anything on the.
Maybe mute us?
Yeah, definitely mute us.
Yeah, I think Christina, if you can mute, then.
Sure.
Good. Thank you.
As we go down the block and you go into the next space. Where it's five hundred and seventy square feet and the retail gets more narrow. We were talking internally, maybe that's the section of the space. That's a diner counter, or maybe part of that becomes. A public art space that we curate and do something with the school and. Some of that space is used. And I'm spitballing. But we can all be creative to really make it active.
Yeah, I just wanna say, I really like that. Uh flexible art space idea, in fact, I had thought of. Just keeping some of that space for like pop up. Art installations and it's something that would attract people and it wouldn't um. Compete with existing retail which.
Yeah.
You know, has its weaknesses as well.
Yeah, uh uh and look.
Showing that out there.
Uh we like it and we like immersive retail experiences. Um I can tell you uh today. My kids were at four different immersive retail experiences in New York. That were all. Experimental but have been working. Um there's AR. Experiences that are museums that are immersive that are been going on in New York City. But there's no reason those can't go in outside of New York City. They don't have to be four or five thousand square feet, but something that is different art based. And and truly, the kids blew me away last week. And I would love to take. A piece of this space and say, what do you guys wanna see? Because truly. We took the input, we said, let's move the bike rooms and now this is space that we didn't program, we didn't financially program. And if we could make some of it work, well, let's look into doing so. Doesn't have to be all of it be a piece of it and it could be something that works well with the community. Community engagement is is a big part of making developments work.
Yep.
So as you continue down, you get to the driveway. Twenty-four feet wide is what we need to do by code. Then you get to your next lobby piece. And then this is the piece that we we really were talking about last week is your existing sewer easement. Now, this public court here is a thousand square feet. We talked about the the Amazon drop off or. Or whatever delivery drop off there is. So if you see that there's that. That marked area that says alternative service vehicle space. I'm gonna say this kind of bluntly. This is a terrible idea. A a car or truck or vehicle would have to pull into this and then back out into oncoming traffic on Greeley. I I don't think this makes sense. If you look into the. Garage itself, it says service vehicle parking space. That's where we've designated at least one space. In addition. With this revision, we have additional parking now. Because of that sewer easement, we've we've reduced it from forty-five to forty-two apartments. But we've managed to keep. A total of fifty-two parking spaces, so forty-two for the. Units. Four for shared parking uh for the cars. Five for the commercial and one for the temp parking. For. In the mix of parking, not every space is always used. There's always gonna be vacant spaces. So of the addition of the service space and just normal traffic flow. There'll always be vacant spaces in addition to that one service space for deliveries. So we feel very strongly. That that drop off should be in the building, get the cars off the street. In addition, the delivery guy is never gonna park his car there to go to one lobby next to there and the other lobby all the way across the building. Just not practical. But if he pulls in, he can access both of them. So w- we think we did. One, a a better job of showing all of it. And explaining all of the public space that we've we've put on the ground floor, cuz it's a total of. Four thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet that's designated for public use on the ground floor.
Could I ask a question about the public space?
Absolutely.
Along the. Train track side, there's a lot of green. Is that? Expected to be used or accessed in any way, or is it just gonna be a nice green?
No, that's just a buffer zone.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure cuz they.
We we needed to push the building back. Off of the train tracks. To create a buffer between the building and the train tracks.
Perfect, and then um the sidewalk, if I'm looking at this right, is not going to continue um past the driveway?
No, it is, that green area is public space, not the sidewalk.
Okay.
Sidewalks in front of. The sidewalk goes all the way down past the building. That green area is. Additional public space. On our property line, the sidewalk's in front of that area.
Understood, thank you.
Hey Jeff, um. I was just in the city this weekend, would you consider? Just for residents of the building, but also for. Per, you know, residents of the town, putting in maybe in this. New pocket park to the north, like a small dog run in there?
So the dimensions, I've built a few of them. Um they get a very visceral response and by I have dogs. The noise creation from a dog runs immense. The residents above will hate it. The maintenance for them is huge and I don't know if it'll fit.
Okay, messy.
I I've built two of them, a little one and a big dog run. Um and there's a constant war around them.
Okay.
And I noticed there's two bike storages highlighted on here?
Yes. So we moved them to next to either lobby. So that the residents. So the way the building's gonna operate is because of the length of the building. People will walk into either side and go up the elevator and go to their respective. Sides of the building so they don't have to walk four hundred. Feet to one end. So we figured to put the bike storage near each lobby so they could go down and take their bikes and. We're trying to promote people to get out of their cars.
I like it.
So. We're 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 gonna try to get people's minds away from their vehicles.
And what about the electric scooters, are those gonna be in the parking area or in that bike rack area?
So. That's one thing we still wanna program out and we need to discuss further with the electric scooters. And electric bikes. The. Storage of the batteries are need to be discussed further of how they will be done. Of what? Fire. Systems need to be in place. And if they can go in the bike room, I think the bike room is the place for them to be.
So I have a a question about the bikes too, I'm looking at the the changes in the um in the legislation on page two. So it looked like you had a minimum of one bicycle storage area per unit, per residential unit. So I'm not sure if I'm reading it correctly, it looks like. There's no longer requirement of one per unit. Is that your understanding?
Those changes are not coming from the applicant, all of the changes in the red line that's in the package tonight are coming from Tom, Sabrina, um from my office. So that's uh.
Okay, but that's what I see in the legislation.
Right, so there was, and that's right, and and that's um. The minimum of one enclosed was uh taken out and it's now just allowing for um. Essentially dedicated uh e-bike and scooter storage.
Okay, so yeah, Jeff, I don't know if it's a question for you, but it's just part of, you know, we're up to e-bikes now, so I just wanted to ask what. What was the thinking behind not requiring the one? Sort of one storage place for bikes for units, especially in light of what Jeff is saying, you know, you wanna encourage people. To get out of the mindset of using a car, I thought it was great that they could all have. You know, bike.
Yeah, I mean. It wasn't us, we we were prepared to provide one per unit.
I think it came from the planning board.
It did.
Well, wherever, wherever it came from, it's it's just.
No, I think it was in their memo, wasn't this, wasn't this one of the things that was in their memo that they didn't wanna specify one per unit?
They wanted to allow for flexibility in the. Finals design.
I could be wrong, but I remember.
Okay, I mean, it it doesn't matter who.
It didn't come from us.
Who wanted it, but I'm posing the question regardless of who suggested. So why wouldn't we, I mean. I think that Don, Jeff and Don were willing to do it, is there something?
I mean, I think we have fifty programmed in here at the moment, by the way.
Right, so. You know, in the spirit of not using cars, we have bikes, that's that's wonderful, why would we?
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I don't have an answer, um Sabrina could probably answer it off the top cuz she's in the meeting next door.
Okay, so I'd just like to flag that.
It it. To to Vicky's point though, if um. I mean, I don't know, maybe someone doesn't wanna bike, but they want electric scooter storage or something, a separate one for their.
Uh huh.
Like, I don't mind having that flexibility as long as there's. Storage for at least one alternate route of transportation per apartment.
Right, okay, I just wanna understand that.
Thank you.
I just wanna understand a little bit.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So that it gives an option. What if somebody wants, I don't know.
Yeah, and it I don't think there's anything that would stop someone from taking a non-electric bike up to their room um. Or not their room, but.
Their apartment, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm I'm gonna stop them.
Not a house. That's what we do in the city, I mean.
Yeah, but they're here.
We're gonna stop them from doing it.
I just wanna flag that because I think it's important.
Yeah, it's a question. But you're right, if people have more than one, they can bring it up to their apartment.
As long as, as long as, you know, as long as they're making sure that. The e-bikes are stored safely and not inside.
Right.
Yeah, and I think the hardest part with that is. Monitoring it. We send memos in our buildings all day long, you know, don't take your e-bike up, but to to truly monitor it. And and our buildings in the city, the doorman building to monitor is incredibly hard. So a hard and fast road, there's no bikes upstairs. Makes it so much easier.
That makes sense.
It's also gonna become harder as time goes by to tell an e-bike from an ordinary bike.
Oh, it's so hard, right, they build them into the gears now. So.
Okay, then and then I think we may want to revisit the having a requirement if. If it's gonna be. No bikes at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I think in this design, there's plenty of room. And keep in mind, the ceilings are, I think we're at like fifteen feet down here. You can do double hung bike storage, I mean, we've got some room in these rooms and. Um so I think we've, you know, designing two rooms away they are is gonna work very well. And promote usage, now we just need a chapline to ride them on.
Yes.
Working on it.
Have some extra money?
Well, if you approve this, you'll have some really nice tax dollars.
Um alright, so anything else on the new plans you wanna go through?
So again, we're down to four.
Legislation.
Hmm?
You're down to, we're down forty-two units from the forty-five. You know, it was a combination, I could have probably. Squeezed in forty-five units. Um but. Uh I, we we sat back and took a look at it and said, you know, we've heard the community that. I'd like to see less units, so. We we didn't try to push and pull and we listened and said. Um let's let's just lose the units where we're losing them and. And and go with where we are. Um and and came up with this.
Could you? Could you talk us through the shift in the mix cuz I, it looks like the three studios are gone and now. There's more one bedrooms and more two bedrooms?
Right, so so we. Reposition them to the ones and twos, the studios were kind of something I pushed in at a point. When we're playing with unit mixes and playing with layouts. And when we. Pushed the corner units away. The the studios are kind of that. Um. When we were going through the building in the mix. As we had to move it around, it was getting hard to squeeze those studios back in. Um so as a unit mix. Those were the easiest to that got cut out. Um. I can tell you this, if unit count wasn't an issue. And everybody might think I'm crazy saying this. I would build more units smaller here. And say some, a- a- and there should be no parking requirement, tell people to go rent. A spot in the commuter lot down the street. And build units that are for people, and this'll sound crazy, your kid that graduates college. That you don't want in your house, that's gonna commute to the city to work. Go go rent a small unit, that'll be lower price because it is smaller just by the nature of it. And doesn't need a parking spot really, or needs a car on a weekend or whatever it may be. That's the future, right, that's that's where it's gonna end up being five or six or seven years from now. But I don't think we'll ever get there now. But that's really what it's gonna be is, it'll be density of smaller units and not the bigger units. Uh uh but we're never gonna get there, and I didn't really wanna say it. But but truly, if we could design properly um. For the future, that's what it would be, is that you could have smaller units with. You know, a higher density and less restrictions on parking and get people to get out of their cars and. A- and really use the train, go to the city, use the town, use Carsharing, use Ubers. Um but we're not there yet.
So Jeff, I have a question um along those lines with the bedroom count, so. Uh in the previous iteration, you had more one-bedroom units, you had an equal number of one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms, right, so now you have. Less one, you have eighteen one-bedrooms and twenty-four two-bedrooms. So.
It was just reconfiguring the layout. Based on the change in the building design.
Cuz based on what you're saying, you you would want smaller units, you would want more one-bedrooms. Right, but now you have less.
Well, it's also square footage also, and it's also, remember, we're playing a jigsaw puzzle, right, we need light and air in every unit. So. Getting light and air, I could fit more one-bedrooms, but I'm running out of unit count. So I didn't wanna put in. Forty-five units and have more one-bedrooms and less two-bedrooms and come back to you with. Forty-five units till even though losing space, I didn't think it was the right thing to do.
That's appreciated, thank you.
Yeah, just the way they fit together.
Yeah, it it's really like what we do is play Tetris, like that game we all played when we were younger. It's what we do all day long is squeezing units together, what fits, what lays out properly, what gives you a good layout, how does it look? I I I sat here the other morning at five in the morning looking at layouts and saying, look. I've got my living room, where can I fit a little home office? You know, it's how do you live, a- and I didn't wanna come back to you with forty-five units and say, look. I lost a corner, but I still managed to squeeze in forty-five units, I would have upset people. And I didn't think that was the right thing to do. I would have gotten a pat on the back. The architects would have gotten a pat on the back that they did what every developer wants. But that wasn't the right thing to do.
Well, we appreciate that, thank you. Alright, and then just on page two, I just whispered to Holly, you can actually see. Where the sidewalk is better than on the first one, just cuz there's no, there's no green there.
Yeah, it's not, it's not as green, my green worked in one place, not in the other.
Right, right, no, no, it makes sense. Alright, does anyone else have any questions about what these changes are?
I think also on the rendering, if you look at it as well.
As what?
If you look at the rendering, you can see how wide the sidewalk is.
Yeah.
That's that's much wider than normal. And. It will go significantly down. All the way.
Yeah, we see. Alright. Um any other questions for Jeff on this right now?
Uh the, on the second. Flooring of those little areas, I'd say amenity.
In the back.
Yeah, what do you, what do you imagine there?
We're gonna either do. That'll be your gym area on each floor or a common seating area. Most likely, it'll be some type, we haven't programmed those out yet, but it'll be some type of amenity space for the floor. We've gotta figure out really the best thing to be, originally, we were gonna have. Really like an amenity gym area on the first floor. But since we reprogrammed that, we're gonna have to figure out how to do it on the second floors. To to make some type of. Fitness or or something on each floor. They're they're not tremendously big anymore, so we're gonna have to figure it out, you know. There's been a shift in. How people exercise. Um so uh we're gonna, we're gonna figure it out, I'm not the one to do that, you guys have seen me.
Okay, thanks.
Um and you're right, and there, you don't need windows that open if you're gonna use a gym or some type of room, like common space or something, so it makes, that makes sense.
And since it's not living quarters, you actually can have windows that open there. Um but you just, you know, i- it's it's not ideal.
Yeah. Alright, any other questions for? For Jeff on these revisions here? Then maybe the board wants to turn to the legislation a bit.
Sure.
Um either go through the changes and or if there's anything else, you know, that you think should be. Should be changed, and I also wanna note for the board, I'm sure you all saw. The letter from the SAB.
Yes, I did.
Um which uh I don't know if that was shared with. The developer or not, but I think that um. At least I didn't think there was anything in there that we couldn't. Make work.
Maybe just make sure that they.
Yeah. I'm not sure, everybody's helped it. I think it, did it come to the whole town board?
I I, yeah, we, I think we all got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Yes, no one outside the town board, so.
Oh, okay, no, that's fine.
That's Christina, not Thomas, no, yeah.
Got it.
Oh, so you should talk about it.
Yeah, you could talk about it, we just, we don't know which one.
Okay, well, we can um, well, but we're just, it's just a town board work session right now, it's not public, but we we should. I don't know, post that or do something with it. Um but. I didn't see anything in there that troubled me, I think they were generally in favor of the project. They had a few thoughts, but nothing um. Nothing that I thought that the developer couldn't.
That was, what, that was where I landed too after reading it.
You know, I think a big thing was, which I know you already said you were gonna do, is to look at, you know, solar for the for the roof. Um you know, they talked about looking potentially at geothermal, I don't know if that's. Possible, um but I think it was. I I I don't even know if geothermal is kind of where it needs to be at this point for a large apartment building of this size.
Yeah, that was one example, um.
I know people have it on their homes who are not.
I think they want, they wanted to know about stormwater management. And what that would be.
Yeah, I think it was more a question of, yeah, how is it, you know.
But is that something that comes up during the season?
No, that's, well, i- i- at a very high level it will, um but the stormwater pollution prevention plan and all of the engineering that goes into that is a site plant.
Mm-hmm.
Well, a special permit application of uh item.
And I think they said that given that there's less. Impervious surface with this proposal than there currently is now, that they end with the green roof, that they actually were pretty happy with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they talked about EV chargers and building the infrastructure to accommodate um. Every resident having an electric vehicle in the future.
And Jeff, one thing, do you think? That's possible?
Yeah, I mean, we we're we're the ones pushing these initiatives, we're the ones pushing for EV chargers. Being green. Co- electric car sharing, I think we're pushing more, our stormwater management systems are gonna be. Ahead of the curve. Per se than. Anybody would try to do. So I think, you know, a- and I'm happy to. Um I'm happy to sit with them and explain all this to them, I don't think they've ever heard, and by the way, let me refer to Andrew. Can explain all of this to them much better than me. But I don't think they've ever heard exactly what we've said we were gonna do, because I think some of these questions. Would have been answered previously. Such as stormwater management. Electric car charging, et cetera.
Right, and some of these, these are written, uh you know, as things the board should consider. Um. From the perspective of the SAB, and I think with regard to the EV chargers, it was just saying, we recognize not everyone's gonna have an EV car now. But can there be? Wiring, uh assuming our electric grids can handle it throughout the entire country. But um can there be wiring so that if people do purchase uh EV cars? That those charging ports can be eventually one per space potentially.
Yeah, and the the other thing they suggested was um an energy efficiency modeling during the design phase of the project. They talked about having an energy efficient enclosure.
I think that's saying what, like then windows and and.
Right, maintaining, sustaining the heating and cooling, right.
Wasn't that in the legislation?
It is, yeah. It is, it's in the legislation.
I saw that, it is, okay.
They, I don't think they were working off the latest version, so that may account for that.
Oh, that might, okay.
On the uh EV charging, just I wanted to point out that the legislation now requires a minimum of fifty percent of the spots to be. Uh fully capable uh of uh charging electric vehicles at full average, that's what it says. Uh a minimum of fifty percent.
Mm-hmm.
The very next sentence. Uh speaks to. Physically separating the EV vehicles from uh traditional gas because of safety cons- fire, fire safety concerns. So there is gonna be potentially this push and pull. With uh you know, um gray parking above habitable space about putting EV chargers.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, forty, you know, charging stations in that space.
So it can't be a hundred percent.
It may not be, and it may not be something you wanna legislate to that.
Right, to do to free.
Exactitude, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that, you know, minimum of fifty percent being ready seems like a good place to start, I agree.
It does, I I agree. And I'm sure that once it comes to actually building, there's, you know, there's fireproofing in between, obviously, the garage and the apartment that's required.
Yes, because he was very.
Yeah. As well as, you know, whatever else those standards are.
Um the the other thing that the board should realize is that the town continues to expand our EV charging capabilities throughout our public lots.
That's true.
Um in town, so that there will be opportunities. I I am concerned that that the fire department is going to have some real concerns about that level of EV charging. In enclosed space, um they were very concerned about the bikes and and it, I was just speaking and, you know, shared that. Um Sabrina certainly had one meeting with the fire department, but I think, you know. We hear on the news how there was just, you know, a wicked fire in the city, um yeah, so we just.
Yeah. Uh.
I I I think that there were some, some issues there, so I don't um, I don't know that that we wanna take. Why don't we have the the fire department?
Well, then we certainly don't wanna do it again, so.
You know, like.
Right, chaplain crossing has, I think, no EV chargers. They have zero for all of their residents.
So for us, for EV charging on our site.
Yeah.
Uh we're gonna have a fully sprinkler. System that will. Be designed for the EV charger. Right, I mean.
Yeah, of course.
Right, and 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 just talking, I mean, we do this and and this is done on a regular basis now. When you have them and you have the proper sprinkler systems and the prop for for car batteries, by the way. You don't hear about car batteries going on fire like you do about these e-bikes and e-scooters the way it's going on. Right, and when you hear about, look, there was a fire, unfortunately, tragic one yesterday in the city. If you look at the building, I'm almost thought as if it was eighty maiden lane, the building a hundred plus years old, no sprinkler. Right, i- it's, you you're talking about systems where they're not, buildings where they're not sprinkled. And there there's no fire protection and they're in a bike repair shop where there. There's no egress, they're they're completely overburdened. So. In a new build, you, they have to be designed one hundred percent properly. Um a- and just know, the the ratings on these new types of batteries that are coming out and as technology's going. You're supposed to be able to light a battery on fire and they're supposed to go out by themselves. Th- this is what it's going to, um. So I think we're getting kind of ahead of ourselves in a new build. I think in town, when you do it. Um. There's companies that you're gonna hire to do this for you. Where you're hiring a company, people pay to charge, you actually create revenue of. But it needs to be a system that has some type of fire retardant built in or emergency management built in to protect yourself.
Right, of course, that makes sense. Alright. And you're right, now that we're ticketing, there's a lot of empty EV chargers in town. Um, okay, so why don't we um, uh do you wanna go through the legislation?
Right, so turning back to the legislation, um we can flip through some pages here, we've already on page two talked about the e-bike and scooter storage. There's some uh wordsmithing changes also on that. There's some uh wordsmithing changes also on that page, just stopping to feel a question. Same on um in on page three, just some language in there um about uh the location for refuge storage. The more substantive changes start appearing on the next page with the uh parking, minimum parking standards. Sabrina would be better better one to speak to this and answer any questions, but my understanding is these numbers were one to one and you're familiar with. Uh the other numbers for retail, commercial and restaurant are I T E numbers that you have heard Sabrina speak to.
Uh I do have a question about that page. So it looks to me, although it's not clear, that that page is doing away with the car share. Because isn't that where the car share allows for one parking space per unit?
There was a provision in there that um allowed the town board to modify. And it had appeared, yeah, on the top of that table.
Right, so. So the um let me see. So the I T E requirement was the standard, the the default.
Just the. The ratios.
But if you have a car share, then you could go to one space per unit. The one space per unit was not as of right. It was based on the car share, a four a four car share spaces.
That that's right, based on the to- the language at the top of the table.
Right, but. But now with the way you change the table, the one space per unit is as of right.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no longer car share requirement. So the car share requirement was what allowed the lower parking standards. So why? What is the rationale now for taking that out?
It, yeah, it's a great question, um.
Who took that out?
We're gonna, that's a Sabrina change, I think.
And Jeff said we you have car share, I was listening to that.
Yeah.
Right.
So they don't even intend to remove the car share, so it looks like we've removed it.
Yeah.
I I don't, I don't.
Why did Sabrina take that out?
I'll I'll I'm making notes and we'll have it.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I I can tell you where it came from because I know where the pushback was.
Why?
At the planning board, at the joint meeting last week, the planning board kept saying, get rid of the car share, reduce the parking by that amount, you don't need car sharing, nobody's gonna use it. And we kept saying, well, we're gonna do it anyway. But if you don't want their requirement for it, take it out, it doesn't affect us, we're doing it no matter what.
I do remember that and I remember I pushed back saying, I use the car sharing, like when I've been at hotels and places like that, and it I think it would be quite helpful and it would actually allow somebody like, oh, I think I told the story that like if my husband and I, once now that our kids are not around, we could get by with one car and a car share easily.
But I think, but here's.
So I think it's important to keep it.
Yeah, I I I disagree with removing the car share, it was a condition.
Go ahead, yes, so it's I'm now was reading some articles about car sharing today and there's a growing industry of um of these car sharing type services. So I don't know if we necessarily need to tie it directly to a project, because that could evolve. I mean, I I I think that it's still a great thing to offer, but I don't know if we need to require it for those purchase levels.
I think there was also a comfort level, I think you heard this uh last week as well with the one to one ratio.
That, that's true.
Well, um we decreased the ratio of the current town code and we went to the I T I T code, right?
I T.
And the I T code was, what I have here, it's one point one spaces for one bedroom and one point four spaces for two bedrooms. So we went down to that. But now we're going down again, but based on what? Based on someone just feeling feeling like it, it seems, right?
Well, well.
Just sort of having a feeling that I mean, I don't, I don't like to to go by that. You know, I like to go by standards, so I understand the I T model. I understand that if you have a car share, then you can reduce the standards based on the car share. But then we did that that next step, sort of like somebody thought it was okay to blah blah blah, and you know, I don't.
I think consensus.
I think you're saying this is the the numbers now are below the I T E standard?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that does, yeah, that does sound quite right, yeah.
The numbers are below. And having the numbers below is conditioned on the car share, right?
Yeah, no, that makes sense to me, yeah.
So. Right, I can see.
Yeah, I don't wanna be even lower.
And then and he said, well, someone had a feeling that one to one was okay, and I'm saying, based on what now?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the I T E standards are grounded in data, so I I feel comfortable with that.
Exactly. I think what Ed was saying, the planning board was generally comfortable with the one to one.
Well, I mean, take that, Ed said that, yeah, I I was I was reporting.
Yeah, I had maybe the wrong word, consensus, maybe was would have been a better um better word to use, but we'll get, I'll we'll 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 go back and.
I understand that, but, you know, consensus based on what?
We'll 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 dig up.
To say, not based on anything.
We'll dig up and answer to that.
Can I, while we're on page four, can I ask a question? So in this, on number eight, where it's coverage, the maximum prohibitive pervious coverage will be eighty-five percent. What they're pros proposing is so much lower than that, is there a reason we haven't brought that down a little bit? Cause eighty-five is awfully close to what we have now of eighty-eight, and that's a lot of impervious coverage.
Where where are you? Page four, number eight. So I mean, I I I'd love to hear if there's some thoughts about bringing it down a little?
I'll get you, I have the same question, um I don't have an answer for you.
Okay.
Alright, the next on the next page, um you've got uh a change taking out the um option to look at more distant locations for parking. I I I think everything that we've heard about off-site parking um is pointing to availability closer to the building, most likely right behind City Bank, um not twenty-six hundred feet away.
Oh, where are we changing?
So we've taken that option out because it just doesn't appear to be like it's gonna be uh feasible or useful. And then the next change, taking out that language below, um it seems to me we stating it obvious, uh to the extent that the availability of uh public transportation matters, of course you'll consider it. I don't think we need to save in legislation. In the parking in Lu, we took out uh that qualifier at the end about um traffic uh circulation improvements. So if a a fee in lieu of parking is collected, if 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 the fee really ought to be dedicated to parking improvements, not other improvements, not traffic circulation improvements.
Agreed.
So that's that became that. Um we spoke about the next change in section ten about separating E V chargers. Uh I I know Sabrina would uh really like to have been here to talk about the energy standard section where we did some pretty extensive um changes.
Well, can we just get go back to number ten for a second?
Sure.
I don't know that there is currently I don't know that it's feasible to have a fireproof wall. I mean, can you guarantee that elect E V charging is separated from petroleum vehicles, I.
Is that required?
That's what it says here in ten.
You know, I I flagged this question.
No, meaning is it required by someone?
By code?
Well, the 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 change came from Tom to Paul, the building inspector.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, okay.
Alright, so I I can't answer the code question, but I can tell you the source of the change in this case was somebody.
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe.
So uh but we we'll suss it out and just get some more detail on that.
Okay.
I mean, I think a hundred percent, it says should include at a minimum the sprinkler system.
I I I can. Answer that, guys.
What?
Sorry?
Right. I I I can tell you that's impossible. You can't have a fire rated wall between every parking spot.
Well. Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure if it's saying in between every spot, it's saying separate petroleum fuel vehicles from E V vehicles, so maybe it's, you know, one wall and two s- two separate sections of parking.
I I would think you definitely wanna fireproof ceiling so that it's separated from the rest of the, from the residential areas of the building.
I'm gonna have that anyway.
But I I'm not right into this, but let's let's look into that.
Well, let's let's see what Tom, let's.
Yeah. Uh alright, I'll take a break.
Can we, I'm I'm sorry, can we go back to the payment in lieu of off-street parking? I have a hard time with that concept. I mean, we have, we have a parking study right now that they did that's was one day, was based on one day. Some day in November of last year.
Well, it was also based on the underlying parking studies that have been done in the last few years as well.
And. Okay, I didn't, I need to look at that, I need to look at that more carefully. I just wish that they would do more stu- you know, study traffic patterns.
Pre- pre- paid.
We we did, we did more, we did more parking studies.
Yeah.
And, yep, and those those will be available when we did. We did additional parking. We did additional parking and we, right, we did multiple, I think we did four or five more days of parking and we just did additional traffic counts that are very similar to what they were in the two thousand and nineteen study. But just just.
Okay, have you submitted those?
No, just today we had a call, today we had a call to go over whether I need to do an entirely new traffic study, or since the numbers are so similar, will a memo suffice? Because to do an entirely new traffic study when the numbers are basically so close to each other doesn't really make sense, other than a waste of time and money for everybody when they're sub sub ten percent different, um didn't really make any sense, so we're gonna submit a memo and see if that suffices for the traffic consultant that you guys hired. And just see where. Yes.
Will that be for next week, Jeff?
If it was with the traffic consultant, was the question, was gonna be my next question, he answered it.
Yeah, I'm hoping it will be.
So, I mean.
I'll answer that in the morning.
So let's assume that there's enough off-site parking, but if there isn't, what is this payment in lieu of off-street parking going to really do for us on a practical level? It it's not going to.
There might be additional wear and tear in our train station parking lot, perhaps, if people are gonna be parking over there and they.
Yeah.
It also allows us at some point, if we ever did decide as a town that we wanted to build a garage or build whatever else for parking, it gives us funds to be able to do that.
Right, but we we don't say what that payment would be or how long the payment would go for. It's not going to solve an immediate problem, essentially.
We also don't have, we also don't have to oh um allow it during the permit approval process.
Right, it also doesn't have to be in the legislation. It could simply be that we require X amount of parking. You know, I know that.
Yeah.
Because I just, I just don't see the practical effect of this.
But but well, can I just, can I ask a question in in practicality? Cause from from reading this, and I only got this yesterday, i- if what's in here that I need ten parking spaces per thousand square feet of a restaurant, that means if we have a two thousand square foot restaurant, I need twenty parking spaces for commercial. With all due respect to everybody here, I I thank everybody for their time, a- and we're gonna withdraw our application at this point. I've wasted so much time and money that we're back to zero again with this new language. This is the, this is, this building's not feasible again. If we're going back to that.
Yeah, we don't, I don't, I get it, because we don't require Le Jardin to have parking on site. We don't require Basso to have parking on site. We don't require Ibiza to have parking on site or anyone frankly, to have parking on site for their retail operations. Not one place in this downtown has parking on site for their retail or restaurant operations.
It's about offs. Oh, okay, this is.
No, offs offs.
No, this is. Off-street parking.
Yes.
Right, which means in their building.
Okay, yes.
And there are designated spots for, this is addition to.
Right.
Cause there are going to be.
That's right, there's ten.
There can be spots for.
There's nine additional.
Retail, but not for like customers, right, for the merchants. They won't be, did I understand that correctly?
Right, there's five parking spots for the commercial. There's four spots for car sharing. There's one service spot and there's forty-two spots for the apartments. We we sat in a joint meeting last week with the planning board, the architects review board, and and the town board representative. And the consensus was, there's such an abundance of parking in town, which also in our initial parking study, there was at midday an abundance of parking. At at the evening, I mean, there's.
I just think it's not fair to require, we're asking them to put in retail to require something that we don't require of anyone else in the town.
I I when I was reading it, I wasn't processing the implications of the restaurants. But so this makes sense, and then the fee that gets established in our fee schedule, is that part of the approval process? Or is that a separate annual center or set?
That's annual, every year we adopt a fee schedule.
Okay, so this would be an annual payment they make?
You would program it out. It it could be annual, it could be a one-time fee. Um it it's something that we haven't actually tried to calculate yet. I think just we wanna have, make sure that the board is comfortable with the concept, and the concept is, it's an option. It's not a necessarily a requirement. It's the town board may in special permit application process, if you find that it there's inadequate parking. And you may find, based on a parking study, that there is adequate off-site parking and it's, you know, not an issue.
Well, and actually, the way that it's worded, saying that it's off-street parking insufficient to meet the standards.
Says may require.
So.
Right, when they when they can't park it on site and they gotta look, they've gotta look, you know, out in, you know, on street parking and
So it's what it's. That's what it's triggered, yeah. Yeah.
then you may, but are not required to.
Okay, we don't, okay, I understand.
And it's just that if that, it's a contingency that just you can address
Okay.
with a fee, if you find it is gonna be advisable.
Right, so that's why I wanted to see more of those traffic studies, because now we've increased the retail. So if, so we've increased it to five oh five thousand square feet.
We increased the retail at the request.
Yes, I I understand, you're you're right, yeah.
Because that's, but that is, that gets us back to just what we want to see on that street, and we didn't want to make it just the bottom floor of everything is residential, because we want to activate that street. That's been coming out for years, so we want that restaurant and retail space in order to activate people, to get people moving down there. So I I would be so upset if they took this out, and I.
Right, so can I just, so the restaurant is now two thousand square feet, is that right?
No, we we don't know.
I just, it's not defined.
So it's not defined as what's.
It's fifty-one forty-five for all the retail.
For everything, yeah, I see that.
Right.
I can't imagine that we're only be the one.
No, that's not gonna be one space.
No, that's gonna be multiple retailers.
So if there if there were a diner, how many, how many square feet do you think that would be?
Right? It so so it it could be two thousand square feet, it could be twenty-five hundred square feet. You know, th- there's a great concept that was in Williamsburg that was called diner, was the actual name of it, which was a casual diner type concept during the day and a casual grocer, and then at night became this great little sit-down restaurant that was a completely different concept. So it met three different purposes in a space.
Yeah, that sounds sounds great.
Right, but it wasn't a tremendous space, but it also meant three purposes. It it met your grab and go. It met your diner concept for breakfast and lunch, and then it it met your wine bar slash, you know, small place concept. I know the owners, uh and I think I, since day one, I've, Don and I've talked about this, I think it would be a phenomenal concept here because you get great use of a space without making it huge. And it, so we have a lot of great ideas, but I just got the zoning language yesterday from Ed. We were never sent it on Friday, but as I'm reading this, it's like we had a great meeting last week of let's activate the street more, and now I'm getting, you know, it's like, here's the carrot, and now I'm getting hit with the stick for doing what was asked of me, of now you have parking requirements that makes this not feasible again. And wait, now there's a parking fee.
Some confusion about that.
Yeah, I I'm just trying to, because we were not all there last week, we're just trying to, you know.
No, no, I understand.
And frankly, the town board, this is really the first time in this packet that the town board is seeing these changes.
Yeah.
And as I think you're hearing, is we don't agree with all of these, we're not actually sure where some of them came from.
No, and I appreciate it.
We're just talking here, we're just, we have a conversation.
Yeah, we're just having a conversation.
And I'm just expressing our concern that, you know, we're we're all trying to work together and I'm and I'm just saying these things would wouldn't make it possible to do what we all thought we were working together. These things would, wouldn't make it possible to do what we all thought we were working together for, so.
No, that's, that's important information for, for you to share with us, and you know, I apologize, because I wasn't there for the entirety of the working group meeting. So I'm still playing a little catch-up.
Yeah, so it's sounding to me like we may have a restaurant space of two thousand square feet and retail of about three thousand.
I think it's.
But by the way, it could be multiple different restaurants, right? It could be, there could be a diner concept that's two thousand square feet. It could be, you know, some art space, it could be another restaurant concept that's a thousand square feet or five hundred square feet. I think it's gonna be this fluid. You know, a- and maybe we put a survey out there of what people, what concepts are needed. Um, and by the way, once we have an approval of what it is, we're gonna start marketing it prior to building it.
We might need you to build a rage room after this.
We can do axe throwing.
Yeah, you better, you, you have to, yeah, you have to have us talking about these things, it's gonna happen. We're gonna keep talking about it, so.
Look, retail's a passion.
Yeah.
All right, just for.
Twelve?
Yeah, but before we leave, just to clarify, so the, the, the restaurant and the retail parking requirement ratio hasn't changed. But the parking in lieu provision, which we can take out, also has been in this.
Well, we may.
I don't mind the parking in lieu provision, because it actually gives us the option of doing that, it doesn't require anything.
Yeah, my only point is, it's not a new provision, it's been.
But I think that we, yeah.
Okay, let's get, have us thinking.
So.
But we need to relook at nine.
Uh, twelve is, um.
Oh.
Sabrina and, and Tom have come up with a, a standard that, uh, is to be traced back to a provision. Program in the, um, internal revenue code that allows for, um, a tax break essentially accelerating your depreciation curve. For certain, um, improvements, energy efficient improvements in certain buildings. So, um, very sort of well-known program's been around for a long time. Um, and, and the standards are pretty precise when you look at the, um, the notices that accompany the, the code provision. So we've taken that, um, and referenced them, and, and essentially what they require. Is, uh, comparison of your improvement, what you're, how you're going to either improve an existing building. Or, uh, construct a new one, and what its performance is going to be as compared to a reference building. So sort of a, a baseline, and you measure that delta, and if you come up with, uh, the maximum is a fifty percent improvement over that baseline. Um, it's possible, if you're going for a tax deduction, to come in less than fifty percent to qualify. Uh, but here, uh, we've pegged it at fifty percent. And, um. Jeff, I don't know, I know that this is not a new concept, but some of this language and the way we've built out sort of the, the, the working part of it is new. Um, I don't know if your team has had a chance to react to it.
No, I, I know Andrew has had conversations with Sabrina about tying it to it, this tax and programs because of programs change. Um, he had some concerns about it. He is traveling till Monday, when he's back, I will dig in with him to go through it. I, I think we'll be able to figure it out. I, I just again have the concerns that were. There's pretty definitive language about energy code and what the codes are that exist and what have been proposed for future code that's out there. That can be tied to, and it is, it's pretty complicated. Um, but I just worry about tying to programs that change. Um. That could change and then they're moot and don't exist anymore and, uh, is my concern. When there's pretty definitive language of how to build in these environments, that's tried and true, that might be easier, but. I, I don't wanna, I, I'd rather Andrew really do that, cause that's more important. Um, than me messing it up. So let me have a look, again, we just, we just got this yesterday.
I had a similar concern. Uh, it was not so much about this going away, because thi- thi- this standard, as we've laid it out here. I- i- is known, I mean, that these, these references are always going to exist. My concern was more that it is potentially a moving target, because what you've seen is that the, the bar has gotten higher over, uh, over years. Um, so what this tries to capture is what the current standards are, and if any of these got updated, we would just incorporate the updated change. But we can unpack this a little bit more next week.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's, it's unfortunate Sabrina can't be in here with us right now, but we really need to talk about this. Cause it seems like a lot of what happened is Sabrina and Tom got together and. Changed things in here that the town board did not conceptually discuss before they were changed. So I'm worried we're gonna miss things that were changed, that probably we should have had the discussion before anything was changed.
Yeah, these are, these are just recommendations and it's all redlined, so, yeah, we can, we can certainly continue the conversation next week.
Ed, I have a question, and, and you and I talked freely, and I appreciate that very much. The redlining was done town level or you level? I'm gonna assume you level, because you're redlining and the redlining of this is.
Yeah, well, it started with, it's started with Sabrina, um, and, you know, some of the more, you know, the wordsmithing, um, in, in other. You know, more technical changes than me, but this unsubstance, it's really Sabrina, in, in some cases, Tom.
It felt like it's something that actually probably the whole working group should have sat together and discussed and not Sabrina and Tom.
Well, that's something we can, one of the things that we wanted to get to tonight was what the working group meeting next week was gonna cover, so maybe that, this is one of the items.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you, that was my wife, she's, she's not hearing the sound of it. The, the reason I say it, and I'm saying this openly is. This is a process, right, and we were bearing, a- and we're bearing an expense of, of going through this process. And, and it's, we're all learning it, right, cause this is something different to do. We're kind of at the cusp of learning how to design this building, and hopefully Chapacua will be at the forefront of this. And this will be kind of the mold that every other town learns. By the way, there's some patenists and every town should pay you thereafter, once we get it right. But while doing this, right? Thi- this, this gutting of the document this time around. I- i- in my, just, you know, we're going through it right now, all of us kind of as a first time. A lot of it wasn't things that everybody necessarily agrees on, and it's kind of like, when you're turning a contract. That nobody agrees on anything, and you're just crossing each other's comments out, it's not productive.
Right, I, I actually agree, that's why I said, I don't think the process on this was right. I think this is what the working group should have sat through, once we discussed all together these changes. Then we went through and figured out what makes sense in the legislation.
All right, uh, last but not least, uh, fourteen. Um, you really, on page eight, just have some, again, word changes, not substantive.
That's what we need to talk about too, because fourteen E here.
Yeah, getting to.
I'm not sure if that's right, like, I think this might be what Tom wanted, but not. This might be what Tom Curly wanted, but I think most people in the working group meeting at least said no.
I don't think so. Um, so the, the street wall, uh, so I'm now on fourteen E one.
Yeah, I was having trouble understanding like this was changed, changed.
The street wall must occupy more than seventy-five percent of street-facing linear frontage.
Right, and that, that plus three is what gets you the, um, this sort of saw, we called it sawtooth design, uh, last week. Um, that's what that is capturing.
But why would it need to be more than seventy-five? Because then if they want it theoretically, they could pull the whole thing out, right?
Uh. I'm not sure if I follow.
Why can't we put, as we talked about last time, verbiage in here, not this, which is silly. Because you could also do something that, you could have a giant straight wall that's gonna be seventy-five percent also.
Except for.
That could be a hundred percent, which is not what we want. Why can't there just be a description? Because look, we're. I, I would not be in favor of a giant, one giant massive building there. So why can't there be language in there that actually says, I mean, you have a little bit of it in three, but that says. There's no, can there be no, you know, living space along the train tracks? There can be no, you know, to get you there instead, because we wouldn't want someone to turn around and build a giant massive building that just has apartments all around it and.
And we don't want more than seventy-five percent.
I think it should have said less.
Well, it might not be le- like, the, and I don't know that that's even street-facing frontage the way it's written. I, I mean, the way Tom described it at the working group, he said, oh, just build a straight building and it's gonna be more than seventy. And he had a giant block of a building, which is, we definitely don't want. Nobody wants that.
I, I think you need to be careful of what's definitely.
So why can't we put more, just hang on, Jeff, hang on, hang on one second. Why can't we put more descriptive language of what we actually want, instead of trying to hide it with this weird thing? Like to say, we want no, no apartments facing the, you know, that, that can of windows that open facing the train track. We want every building to have windows, every apartment to have windows. We want a sawtooth design that allows for public spaces. We want a minimum of a certain amount of public amenity space, but why can't, for the use of everybody, why can't that be in there?
Yes, some of that is appropriate for legislation and some of it is not.
Yeah, this.
Um, you know, I, I, I see what you're saying, I, I think about the seventy-five, uh, where it says, uh, must occupy more than seventy-five, cause that could be a hundred, and that's not.
Exactly, nobody wants that.
And it, if you read that with three, um, which is requiring, um, this sort of sawtooth design. And the outdoor common spaces in those, um, areas. Um, you know, one and three are intended to work together, but maybe it's.
But does Crenley did have a measurement implied with it?
No. No, it's just, it's, it's.
And so, I mean, I'm not sure it really.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
Does achieve it.
So, so the, the point is, the point is really that we're writing legislation. So that if this developer goes away and, you know.
Somebody else gives us the building.
Jeff, that's not what we think is gonna happen, but we have to be concerned that someone else could come in and look at this legislation and build something that no one ever intended.
Exactly.
So is there a way to, to, you know, prevent that without going through descriptors? Because anything can happen with any kind of description that we could come up with.
Right.
Is there any way so to do it differently, so that maybe we have a, you know, the site planning goes in tandem with the legislation? Is there some way to join, to join this process?
That's it.
Yeah, that, that's example.
That's going back to what it is. That, that's what it is, the problem is that we can't, so, uh, we separated them, because. When we started to go down that path and trying to get them both done, uh, my kids would be bat mitzvah, and my oldest is only nine. And the fear was, we'd never get there.
Why?
Right?
Why is that? Why is that?
Right.
But why do we have to operate on that premise?
That was the fear.
Because historically.
Because it's been over a year now that we're at this. And we're not, like, just, just, just look at the, right, just look at the backwards motion that's occurred. Not, look, nobody's to blame, like, something happened, but we're, we're having meetings weekly. There's two meetings going on currently, talking about the same project right now. The planning board's having one and you're having one. Right now, so how do we, how do we get something done? The thought was just to do the legislation, but it keeps going back to, how do we get the legislation done i- if the worry is without a site plan?
Yeah.
Somebody has to push this thing forward.
I, I think we can get there without a site plan to at least write, you know, because I think a site plan has very specific things that aren't. Appropriate for legislation, but, um.
What about a concept plan? What is the difference?
But, but hang, hang on, I do think there are descriptors we probably can put in here that are more things we absolutely don't want.
To protect, should the worst happen.
I think we can do better next week at the, and this is maybe, maybe the first agenda item, the working groups, uh, meeting. Uh, we'll come back, it'll be a red line, we, you know, actually propose legislation, but we will, um, I think I need to put something in front of you to look at and to mark up and to comment on.
I, I don't, I, I think what we need to do is highlight which sections of the legislation need specific attention. And then just discuss them before it's redlined. It is a waste of time for you to sit there and redline it, I think. And money frankly, to sit there and redline it before we've discussed it. So I think that we need to sit there and say, okay, this is the concept, how are we gonna put language in here? To accomplish what we want with the shape and everything else, and to protect against another developer coming in just building a giant box, right? And figure out, we're gonna have the architectural review board there, who's probably pretty good at this. We've got our, some of our planning board there. I think together we can. Put those minds together and figure out how to say it. Without you deciding and, and then saying, oh yeah, we probably could do better. I, no offense, I think it's hard, but I think you need all of those minds together. I mean, you, you're not an architect, I'm not an architect, but we're gonna have architects there, who I think can help figure out maybe how to say it. In a way that gets what we're, our intention done, without necessarily having to go toward full site plan.
I think, I think it would probably be beneficial to everyone for us to, to do what Lisa's suggesting, and to talk about language. And, and correcting some of the language in the legislation together, rather than we look at it, then they look at it, then they come back with their comments, then we go back with our comments.
Mm-hmm.
I think it is more helpful, more productive, if we're all in the room together, we can talk about this.
Yeah, obviously, it must be done together. Um, Ed, could you explain to me, um. What is a concept plan? The difference between a site plan and a concept plan? Because I, I just wanna know if it would be feasible to tie this to a concept plan, which is maybe not as detailed as a site plan.
Yeah, tha- that's a term that you've heard, um, I think the planning board mentioned. Uh, preliminary development concept plan was something that is unique, was unique to Chapacua Crossing. So that had its own different process and procedure that started with the town board preparing at a very high level a concept plan. And then, once that was finalized, it was given over to the planning board to work on the site plan, the detail.
So could we do that here? Could we develop a concept plan that incorporates the sort of shape, what, what we have here in front of us? Without the detail, without the level of detail of a site plan?
The concept plan though, was more like retail's gonna go here, residential's gonna go here.
And attach it to that. But it's whatever you want it to be, but it could be, it could be, you know, adapted to what this is, this is retail.
A quote, this is.
Wait, I wanna hear Ed's answer.
Well, the con, yeah, I mean, the concept plan there, it, 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 it was different, because you had to make the retail and the commercial and the residential all, so play with one another on a, on a hundred fourteen acres of campus.
Yeah, I mean, this is obvious, they're different.
This is different, um, then, but so what, what I think, the way it would work here is practical matter would be some kind of mashup. Between legislation and, and site, um, special permit review here, and kind of put it together and have that in, represented in a concept plan. I think having them done in tandem, um, which is, and it's still not too late to do, um, is the best solution. Um, if you, if you can't have that, then I think optimizing the legislation. Also locking in some of these, um, characteristics through your secret determination. I think that's the best way at it, as opposed to coming up with, cause again, the concept plan is just gonna create some kind of, I don't know what, between these two different, what are very different processes.
I have a question though. Well, we've submitted to date. Right, we've submitted engineering, we've submitted this plan, I mean, we, it updated, right, that shows parking, it shows. We've submitted almost everything for a site plan except the SWP's analysis. Right, I mean, I think the, the, the only thing from a full site plan submission is the, the last piece of full engineering. Which I was hesitant to do, cause it's, I don't know, another fifty thousand dollars, whatever the number. And I just said, I wanted to know this before we go down that road, because until I know this is good. I can't do the full engineering until you tell me you're okay with this, because it's dependent on, right, if it's forty-two years, forty-five years. I, I can't do a full engineering until I know that everything that's here is okay. It's hard to do a full engineering, right, until you know that in concept, this works. What we've submitted to date is what we wanna build. And the next step from this is going and doing the engineering on it.
Gorgeous.
And that's the last, right, it's, it's, Langen has done all their preliminary work. We submitted that in our initial application back in September of last year. Right, the, there, we almost answered every single question that was come back on that site plan application. And then it went up in the air of, let's separate the process. So we've almost given everything. And then it kind of went in two different directions. So, other than that.
Look, site plan is more than just him doing the engineering, because we have to refer it to the planning board, we have to refer it to the ARB, we have to refer it to the county. We, you know, it gets into the minutia of like, where is the air conditioning unit going?
But those initially.
Like, we don't need to know where the air conditioning unit is going to approve legislation.
No, but the the planning boards involved, the architect review boards involved, all of those things, by the way. Those things are all hidden, any, you gotta remember, the way we've designed this building, there's no air conditioning units exposed on the property. We, everything.
That was just an example.
It was just an example, Jeff.
No, I know, I know, I know, but by the way, when we do it in other towns, like, I literally have to choose where our garbage cans going. Before I've designed full buildings, it gets silly sometimes, right? But kind of the beauty of this.
Well, this is mentioned in the legislation.
Yeah, so, it's in, it's in here.
Right? Right, like, most of this is in there already baked in.
Yeah.
Why can't we attach this?
It could be attached to the secret determination, um, attaching to the legislation, uh. And I'm not quite sure what the question is.
Yes, I E.
I mean, is the question, can I have a special permit at the same time, I mean, no, that's not the process that, uh, just team decided to pursue. They decided to separate the application, we didn't.
Uh, I don't know, I remember discussing it at a joint meeting with the planning board.
I came in as a joint, that, you know.
We we were supposed to do it in tandem.
We were, and that's the way it was originally filed, did the applicant decide it in the fall.
So what happened? When did that change?
We've, we all agreed, we all sat at a meeting, a joint meeting with the planning board and the town board, and we agreed. That they should separate it. We all did, it was unanimous.
I I don't.
Well, I'm I'm not saying that you're wrong, I don't recall.
So. But this is where we are, so it doesn't, you know, I think we have to just see how we're moving forward.
Yeah, this is where we are. I think we should go back to what we were origin, what we were talking about in terms of this and how we're going to address this, which I think we all agreed.
Right.
We'll do it at the working group meeting, yes.
We should do that together, we should be talking, and I think that gets us to a better, stronger.
It's the two times, right.
Piece of legislation that everyone will feel more comfortable with.
Yeah. So we're gonna do that on Tuesday.
So next week will.
Okay, so.
But I think what, I think what Vicki you were saying is, you want some assurances of what we're showing you is what we're delivering, right?
Well, I I mean, not even what you're delivering, but God forbid something really unforeseen should happen and you just decide to retire and go off to the Bahamas, I don't know. And you decide to sell this. Property to someone else. And so, they have, then they'll have this legislation and they can build something completely different as long as it comports with the legislation. So that's what we're trying to guard against.
Yeah.
The first drafts of this were very, very definitive and really tied to exactly what we designed. And it got ripped apart by. I think it was the planning board saying it's too definitive to this project, i- it's basically leaving no room for site plan approval. And you're basically saying, once the legislation's done, the site plan's just a matter of fact. And they ripped out everything that was specific to the project to make it's.
Look, Jeff, I I don't, I I hear what you're saying, I I think, let's, next week, let's, next week. We're gonna be with the two members of the AR, it'll be the town board, two members of the ARB, two members of the planning board. And let's figure out how we can come to a happy medium to figure this out, to avoid, like I said before in the meeting. You know, lawyers like to plan for the worst and hope for the best. So let's figure out how we can, you know, what sort of language, I I fully believe that nobody's going anywhere and and, you know, if this gets approved, what we think is gonna get built, is gonna get built. But to Vicki's point, you have to plan for the unforeseeable happening, you know, God forbid someone gets sick, whatever it may be, you know, you.
Yeah.
So we need to put in some language in there to prevent that, you know, a giant block that was drawn up at the meeting last week from being built. So, um. So, but I think we can all come to that together next week, I think, I think we can work through that and figure that out.
Do we still wanna discuss what is in front of us here?
I think we're done.
There's only one more, um.
Well, before we leave fourteen.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, point, it's labeled three, but it should be four.
That's the one I wanted to flag.
Oh, okay, yeah, um, that seems completely different.
It's, well, it's changed, so the way it originally read, uh, the second, third and fourth floors of the building would be stepped back from what we're calling the street wall. That that leading edge of the building facing the sidewalk or the street. Um, I think what was intended really was just the top floor, the fourth floor, uh, would have a setback of some distance. Because it was, um, thought that that would mitigate some of the massing, uh, the visual massing of the building.
But that, that affects what he's show, showing us right now, um.
Yeah, that's a change, it it's always, again, it's, it's always been in the legislation, but it's always said, second, third and fourth floors, where I think the intent was just the fourth floor.
Was in the original draft we received from that? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it was in in the applicant's original draft? No.
Okay.
Was it in the first town draft? Yeah, it's been with us since the fall.
Got it.
A- and we've repeatedly said, that's not something we can achieve. The the ground floor, the whole building is set back from the street. And if you're asking us to set back further, it 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 just, it it's not, we tried.
It seems like they stepped back the entire building five feet.
Yes.
In order to kind of push it back a little bit.
Correct.
Right, the whole ground, the whole thing looks like.
The whole ground floor stepped back, we're stepped back from the train tracks as well with that buffer zone. We're stepped back, right, we're we're off of everywhere to create these public spaces. And that was kind of the point of the presentation earlier, was to really delineate, know what we did.
I think it might look weird to step it back.
Uh, yeah, I.
I think it's gonna look weird architecturally, honestly, to step back that top floor.
It's also structurally to build it, remember, this is a mass timber building, it's coming, put together, if you start making it not this, going up this way, it changes the way it's built. It changes the way the units are built, we're gonna, it it, we tried for days, Andrew and I, cause it was asked of us. It's, we couldn't figure out how to do it without absolutely destroying the buildings. We already lost the corner. Uh, we we tried for days and on Friday, we both were hitting our heads and all of us down as well, that we couldn't get it to work. Um, I I understand the request, and this is what I said last week in the joint meeting. You push, you pull, you push, you pull, until you push and pull and it evaporates it, we can't build the building that is functional. It has so many limitations from train tracks to the shape of the site. That you see it as you're looking at the retail as it tapers down, that when you start to make it as a wedding cake is the best example, as you go up. On a, on a site like this, it just, i- i- it cannot physically work unless, as Tom Curley, by the way, he wrote it last week, if you add all those things up. You go with under thirty five units. And, but unfortunately, the financials don't work when you do that, um.
What, what did you say you you cut out?
He said we'd have to cut down to thirty five.
Instead, if you push and pull so much. You end up with a building that's less than thirty five units and it just financially doesn't make sense, or architecturally makes sense. And construction wise, is too difficult to build by doing that on a site this size.
But you, I mean.
Right, when you taper a building that way.
I think it would look weird.
We should talk.
I think it would, I mean, we'll talk to the ARB, but I think it would architecturally look weird to step that back. I think you've got this step back here too, where you've got this green space in these public doors. And the whole building stepped back five feet, so, and then you've got these areas that are stepped back like a lot.
Okay.
I I don't know.
It's the board's prerogative, it's something that, uh, we could talk about next week with the ARB.
Uh, let's talk about it with the ARB, yeah.
What else, last week, what else, um, in terms of either change of legislation?
I think let's talk through these changes and let's go, I think we need to focus on the agenda, uh, on the, um, legislation.
Yeah.
Okay.
To move, like, to move this forward if we're, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Do it.
Well, I've, I've given my. My questions and thoughts.
Yeah, same here so far.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, appreciate the thought you put in this. And I think next week, we should just sit down, I really don't think we should do a red line, but I think what we should do in the agenda. Is just kind of highlight the areas that we want of the legislation that we need to focus on as a group.
Okay.
Um. And it's like, you know, I think we don't need to focus on affordable housing, that seems dumb, like.
Right, there's a few that we don't need to talk about.
But there's, you know, we could go through that, I think they became pretty evident tonight.
Okay.
All right. Okay, um, anything else from anyone on board?
No.
Nope.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, by down the budget, um.
Bye.
So, next on the agenda.
Sounds like.
So we're moving to Knox Fox, which is.
We're trying to listen to that.
So, um, I had an opportunity to take in, uh, forward, uh, the redline version of the Knox, Knox. Legislation to Robbie Bancroft, who is a fire marshal along with, um. Uh, Chief Ivey from the Chapacola Fire Department and, uh, Chief Santone from the Millwood Fire Department. Um, they are all on board, they they felt that the redline accurately reflected the changes that they requested, thanked them very much for this. Um, so they're very pleased that, uh, that this would go forward, so. Um, I don't know, did they set a public hearing based on this, if that's what they're saying?
I think there's a resolution in the patent, instead of public hearing, the only, um, blanket, and, um, I don't think we have this, but the number of days, uh, you would allow folks to come in. To comply with the law, if it goes in the books.
You talked about this, thirty, I think this was.
I'd suggest that ninety, if Tom was gonna do this.
Yeah. Is there a backlog at all, do we know, from the company?
Right.
You know, I don't wanna say you gotta comply in thirty days and they actually are unable to do so.
Well, ninety was gonna be suggestion, and maybe we start with ninety, we could always change it, um.
Is there a way to put in there that that the date of compliance could be changed by resolution, so we wouldn't have to to.
Yeah.
To, um, do a home republik hearing to just change the legislation?
Oh, you wouldn't have to for that kind of a change.
No.
Well, for that, for that, you know, by resolution, we could just add it, um.
Or modify it.
Yeah, but we wouldn't have to re-mote this public hearing for that.
If we changed it from ninety to one eighty, or?
No, no, if if we say ninety, um, you know, then it's ninety, but if you wanted to add language about changing it by resolution, we we could do that.
Yeah. Right. Right now, right.
No, I could do it during the public, even if it's a hearing opens.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Um.
And that way, if we wanted to change it along the way, we could make it, you know, give people more time, less time.
Yeah, if we find out there's a huge supply chain backup or something.
Yeah, we'll do so. And you know what, that may happen from time to time.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. So we could do it just by resolution and when we, uh, settled with the public hearing, okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That sounds good.
Right, uh, ninety, is ninety for place over for tonight, and for introduced, what if it's a network, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, but before, I I would like to, before we even put that number in, I mean, we should put it in for now, but I mean, maybe we can just call Knox and just find out if there's delay right now.
Yeah, but at at the public hearing, I will.
Cause if they say, oh yeah, we're six months delayed, we shouldn't even bother with the ninety number, we should put.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay.
All right, um. Next is the facade grant improvement program, which basically, very short and sweet, it just adds a little, uh. Clause that allows the, this sort of society to be knowledgeable.
Mm-hmm.
And unfortunately, we didn't get to receive some of that.
I don't understand why, because so many people told me they were gonna apply, I don't.
Um. But there's a blank in this one too, so it says, the program shall terminate on.
Right, so.
Yeah, I thought we had to decide that, is that?
You you do, uh, or you should, um.
Well, it was, I think, till September thirty, I think. I see, we have the site improvement program.
How long was it originally?
Yeah, we're looking, um.
It was till September.
It's till September.
Uh, this is September, yes.
Yes.
But went from when to when, how long was the total time period?
I see it. Like, two or three, three years, maybe?
I think it was when Ivy started, Ivy was.
It was after the construction, we decided to put it in, because things got ruined.
Nineteen, sort of nineteen, yeah.
Three, nineteen.
I feel like it was three years.
But it was approved in, um, September ninth of twenty twenty was passed.
Just a job, what the incentive. Twenty twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can give me one second to just.
I mean, it's something we want to happen, so are we constrained time-wise, but we extended it higher?
Say it in here.
We're not constrained, it's just that, pardon me, think after three years, I mean, the point of it was because. Of the construction downtown that happened, and it kind of messed up storefronts, was to allow kind of.
Right, okay.
Merchants in the vicinity vicinity of where the construction was to improve the facade of their store. So at some point, it does become. All right, you know, you've had three years, where have your applications been? If you don't, not gonna use it, because frankly, I think if we're gonna extend it, we have to extend it to Millwood. If the the point of it initially was Chapacola Hamlet to reimburse people, to help with, from the construction, if we're gonna.
Right, but this is the money, but no, but but the the C P.
But this is the money from the, yeah.
Four point five, which was only for Chapacola Hamlet.
Right, so.
So, we would have to, we would have to.
But no, but my point is that at some point, it becomes, you're no longer improving your facade after that construction.
It's no longer based on.
Yeah, but I think, right.
But look at it, we've got painting going on right now, some of that probably were qualified, right?
Mm-hmm.
They didn't.
I'm sorry, it should terminate three years from the date of adoption.
So, so three years.
September nine, yeah, twenty twenty third.
Nine, so.
But I see what you're saying, it's it's no longer tied to the construction, it's been too long, so.
So it's already.
Right. Right, so the the, so it was supposed to be a a, um, uh, two-phase program, so the first one was capped at a thousand dollars. And then there was gonna be a second phase.
Yeah.
Right, that's right.
Um.
Well, maybe that'll. Maybe if we.
Because the fifty percent, because, see, and it was, it was envisioned that after the form-based code, after there was additional construction. That we would be, um, giving a fifty percent match up to seventy five hundred dollars per applicant.
No, it wasn't gonna be after the form-based code, there would, it's expiring this September, there was not gonna be any construction, I don't think it anything did that.
It was not. The, and after the adopt, in phase two. Which shall be implemented after the adoption of a form-based code for the Chapacola Hamlet, you forget when it's was, so this was when Ivy was supervised and the form-based code was released.
Oh, I see, questioning the forms.
Yeah, it never would have, um, but it never would have actually accomplished its task, cause there wouldn't have been anything built yet anyway.
Yeah. No, no, so it was, the the point, the point was to, for those people that weren't improving their buildings.
But does it matter anymore, because it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
That they could take in, you know, do a facelift as well, to be able to compete with the new construction that would be coming through.
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's.
So basically, phase two never, never, so the limit's been a thousand, which probably explains why there weren't too many applications.
Never, never happened at all.
If we, if we move forward with fifty percent up to the seventy five hundred and extend the timeframe, we might get some applications and, um, cause it'll be higher.
So it was, we had tasked it as it's the town's expenditures of seventy five thousand dollars for both phases.
The criteria is.
The last, the last call?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we do it for another year.
Well, I I think, um. But what is it, are we legally limited to the Chapacola Hamlet? Because now it does seem equitable, inequitable.
The money is coming from money that was given to us by, um.
Yes.
Uh, some of Greenfield, in order to mitigate issues that happened to the Chapacola Hamlet.
Some of Greenfield, which.
Because of Chapacola Crossing.
Because of Chapacola Crossing, so we actually are not allowed to use that money in Millwood.
We, we could add money to the 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 town and expand the program.
Okay. But could the town.
I think we should definitely have that discussion, um.
There was language in that dedication that, uh, essentially allowed the town to use it for other purposes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah.
Did it? We've never said that before in all these years.
Well, I know the language is in there, because I would, I put it in there.
Yeah.
Well, if the language is in there, I mean.
Overlying, it's invisible ink, cause we never saw it, he never, he never fessed up.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, you, that's never, I've never heard done in all these years.
Right. Well, there's a legal justification for for asking for it in the first place, cause it all, as you said, to offset the impacts, uh, to the Hamlet.
Mm-hmm. Right.
But, um, it, you know, it does have some language, it has a little bit of an escape valve, you know.
Mm-hmm.
It's.
Mm-hmm.
I had no idea. First time here.
Yeah, first time I'm hearing that too, um.
Well, if we might, if we can, if we can expand this, it's as it is, to Millwood as well. Um, without having to have a separate program, I think that that would make sense, but I might say we'd wanna lower it from seventy-five hundred if we bring in a whole other. Hamlet, maybe down to five.
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a cap of the total amount of money that can be spent, so, which is seventy-five thousand.
Right.
Oh, no, no, I understand, but that's what I. I guess the first come, first served.
Yeah.
It, yeah, I mean, and one, it'd be a fire.
Although to Holly's point, if you're doubling the amount of people who can use it.
And increasing the amount, you may incentivize someone to use it when it's, is it.
But then fewer people will be able to use it.
You'd have twenty people, if you left it at half of seventy-five hundred, it's twenty people that would be able to use it to get to seventy-five.
Right.
Uh, yeah, that's what I was, I would actually.
And.
You'd have been zero today, so.
I.
Are you gonna just raise it to even twenty-five hundred, or then it doesn't need to be seventy?
I think we should lower it. No, I think we should definitely lower it and include Millwood, I I think five though.
I I think five is a good, a good number.
I think so.
I think twenty-five is really low.
Yeah, especially given how you have.
Twenty, what what, you have done for that.
So just arguably. In Millwood.
Mm-hmm.
So like the whole shopping center is owned by one person.
Yes.
I'm envisioning a new sign, cause that sign is.
Right, that's kind of what it would be really, just a sign, what else could they do?
We're sitting on and busted, and doesn't look good.
Well, we actually.
Cause it's not gonna be each individual store does that.
Can we say owners and tenants and retail, so I.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be, it could.
I'm trying.
Sign and features.
They could do it.
They could like, uh.
Yeah.
Oh, the triangle sign?
Yeah, in Millwood.
Very good. Yeah.
Millwood sign is broken down.
Yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah, I know.
Wait, wait, that's our sign.
But that's our sign, that's not the.
That's a shame.
Yeah.
It's not their sign, that's our sign.
No.
Well, well, thanks.
Fun balance.
So, we're heading Millwood, we need the amount and need the time, timeframe.
Did we all agree five thousand?
Is it five?
I would do five. I'd make five.
Okay, and.
Up to five.
Duration, now you can always extend the duration by resolution.
I would do one year.
It's a year, one year from adoption.
Yeah, one year.
Yeah.
One year.
One year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then hopefully, we don't have to talk about it in a year and figure out why nobody's applying.
Okay, and we're selected on the starting site.
Well, I I don't.
It means we, it means we did our best, did we get to that point.
During the year.
During the year, we should do an outreach.
Well, it's been in the supervisors before, we've, I've personally, I personally went to every single merchant. And let them know this was available, which is how I know people said, oh yeah, we're gonna apply.
We should get the, the general commerce on something, yeah, that's.
I'll I'll put the merchants.
Again, they did.
Well, yeah, we want to do it again.
We'll do it.
Yeah.
About one year, about one year.
We should all go to merchants.
Okay, next.
Uh, okay, so we're gonna revise it and then, uh, put it down for public hearing next week?
Or we do.
It's just a resolution. So I could, uh, we can have it on for next week with those changes?
It's just a resolution, is it?
Yeah, not a public here.
Oh, I thought, okay, fine.
Oh, even easier.
Right. It's not.
Well, well.
Done, sorry, turn.
Okay.
So what happens, it's late at night, okay.
It is late.
Um, sorry, okay, so the next are, um, administrative items. We've got a payment of claims, adoption of monthly reports, and adoption of minutes. Um, Holly, thank you so much, there are some revisions to the minutes, so we're gonna approve them, but they're gonna be subject to, uh, Holly's edits, that, um.
I sent them to.
Can you send us the edits, so we can see them before we approve?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was, um, I can just tell you, it was one thing where we were talking about the Holocaust Human Rights Committee proposal of the butterflies.
Oh.
And we started talking about under the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just wanted to clarify that my comment about, um. The space was, or a bigger discussion, was regarding public art, not that project specifically.
So you described it something that you said.
I was just, it was just clarifying, yeah, I just wanted to clarify a comment I made.
Okay.
Um, and so the the minutes are, you know, in the the packets and. Please review them, um, if we made a mistake, certainly, we love you to.
Should we prove the minutes next time?
We can approve them next week, it's fine, it doesn't matter.
Sure. Oh, okay. Okay.
Do we actually approve it?
Will you put them out?
They, you accepted it.
No, I just didn't see that, I was gonna say, I didn't see it, any.
Yeah.
Because they, technically, they're the clerksmen, so that's.
Right, yeah, that's, I was gonna just making sure, cause I didn't see it as an action.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, authorization to approve revised proposal, um, this is, we've got two change orders, uh, for Tectonic, one, um, both for the, um. Uh, Quaker Street Pedestrian Bridge, there's some additional work that needs to be done on that, again, we're seeking FEMA. Uh, funding for the renovations there, and so, you know, fingers crossed, um, it seems to be proceeding, so we're excited about that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, next is, uh, authorization to settle, um, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, the tax resurory proceedings. Um, and there's information in the packet if anybody has.
Do we need Josh to talk to us about that?
Yes.
So, we we didn't get, sorry, we might have to just table that, we didn't get the revised numbers. We, the board did already approve it, it's just the numbers were off, so we just have to sort of.
We didn't.
Approve the revised numbers, which we have to.
Okay.
So we'll take that off the actions for today.
Yeah, thank you.
That's number seven, so great. All right, um, no.
No, we don't have an option.
It's, it's those actions here, should be here.
I didn't see it.
Where was it?
It's not in the, it's not in the.
It's not.
It's here, it's taken out.
Right, because she didn't get the numbers, so she she didn't prepare.
Yes, right, taking it out.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, so we've got just, um. And we're taking out number six?
Yes, right, we'll do it next week.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we'll do it next week, so Lauren, we're gonna hold the facade improvement program for next week? We'll do it then?
Are we talking about the Knox box?
No, the facade improvement program.
No, that's fine, we can take a look at it.
Sorry, six in the national resolution, sorry.
Got it, okay, sorry.
It's not, just a reference, okay?
Yes.
Sorry, so why don't we just go, uh, go through what's here, all right? So we're ready to drop resolutions? I think so.
Shall I start?
Sure.
I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Listed on the summary pre-check writing report in detail voucher detailed report, located June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Just will be issued in mail to each claimant listed on Thursday, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Second. On favor.
Hi. I move to authorize the hiring of Aaron Doley to the position of animal warden slash parking enforcement officer within the Newcastle Police Department. At the annual salary of forty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-two cents, which is group one, step one, effective June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. On favor.
Hi. I move to authorize the hiring of Daniel Sutra to the position of labor within the Department of Public Works water unit. Water unit at the annual salary of fifty thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-nine cents, which is group two, step one, effective June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. On favor.
Hi.
I move to authorize the hiring of the individuals listed in the table below to the position of recreation attendant to serve as twenty-twenty-three camp staff, thirty to thirteen dollars per hour. Effective June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
A second.
On favor.
Hi.
I move to authorize the hiring of a recreation attendant to serve as camp health director at the rate, uh, ranging from seventeen dollars to twenty-three dollars per hour. Effective June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
On favor.
Hi.
I move to set a public hearing on a proposed local law amending Town Code Section forty-eight dash twenty-eight regarding the installation and maintenance of Knox. Boxes at commercial, non-residential, and multifamily buildings and structures for emergency services for Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty-three. The town of Newcastle Town Hall at seven-thirty PM or soon thereafter is reached on the town board agenda that evening.
Uh, second.
On favor.
Hi.
I move to adopt, um, following resolution, whereas on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the town board adopted the resolution to authorize. The Department of Public Works to obtain bids for various water treatment chemicals. To be used in twenty twenty-three at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. And whereas this bid requested fixed itemized prices for each chemical. For the year period, and whereas the bids were open at eleven AM on Thursday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the town received the following proposals for item three. From George S. Klein Chemical Company for, um. Two dollars, for two dollars and point six three two four per pound, and Shannon Chemical Corp.
For this?
For four dollars and point four seven per pound. Whereas the town has determined that there is not a current need for said chemical, therefore be resolved. But the town board hereby rejects all bids received for item three and. Be further resolved that the town board hereby authorizes and empowers the town administrator and official of public works. Or is designated to take all actions necessary to implement the purpose of this resolution.
Second.
On favor.
Hi.
So I'm sorry, so that was part of the water chemical bid, that we approved the other week, and as it turns out, it's not, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We're only putting us here on my name.
Uh, okay, kind of a move, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
On favor.
Hi.